Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for April 6, 2021. My name is Carrie Marknek. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I just need to read a few notes here. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID virus, the town of Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Let's see. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is acquired by law. This meeting will feature public comments. I'd like to confirm that board members and persons anticipating an agenda are remotely present and can be heard. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Anthony Zaiden?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Amy Protski?
Yeah.
And Michelle Gillespie?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kathy Jubert?
Here.
Fred Lutchfield?
Here.
Great, thanks. Just in terms of ground rules, I will invite you speaker on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will write their full name and hold their name until called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the chair, taking care to identify themselves. Tonight, as I mentioned, we'll have public comment. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. By phone dial, star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please note that part of your phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the boundary screen and wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will list members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes for any comments. We do not have executive session this evening. With that, why don't we get started with the first item on our agenda? Just want to switch gears here. So first on our agenda, we have the continuing public hearing for 425 Whitney Street, special permit site plan approval and special permit per groundwater protection overlay district application. That is for Staris, and let's see, just bring in the... Oops, you're bringing them in, Jim. There we go. Okay. There we go. I think we should have everybody on. Does that look like everybody from the team on the call? Were we missing anyone?
Good evening. Stephen Madouse, yes, I see Rich Whitehouse from VHB, Mike Corelli.
Okay, great. And Kathy, you said the peer reviewers are not joining this evening, correct?
Correct, excuse me, correct. They are... Well, I can go into a little bit more detail, Carrie, after the applicant presents, but they are still in the process of reviewing the additional questions that they had missed the first time around, which is in that, I think it was the November 2019 Planning Board memo. So there was a series of questions that they're splitting up between themselves, you know, environmental partners, and also the CN, the consultant on the X-ray information. So we anticipate that we'll have that for the next meeting for April 20th.
Okay, so for tonight, I have the traffic and groundwater revisions that were submitted. Is that what we have for tonight? Okay. Okay, is there anything specific that the applicant wanted to speak to regarding the revised plans that were sent? Or comments, I'm sorry?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. We did submit responses to the peer reviews comments, and I believe we have someone from VIA here as well. So I don't know if...
Steve, sorry, that's Andrew Arsenal.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, I think it was just brought over.
There he is. So, you know, the responses, some of the responses were rather lengthy. I don't know if you want just an overview, the board from Mr. Arsenal of Vines Associates, or Mr. Whitehouse of VHB, or just, you know, I don't know if the Planning Board had an opportunity to review those responses, but whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Okay. Board members, I... So I did take a look at them. I don't know if other members have a chance. Do you want to start with an overview type look or any specific areas of focus? Start with an overview maybe?
Yep.
Okay, great. Do you want to just start with that? Either one is fine to start with. Do you need to bring up the document, or do you want us to bring it up?
I think, I don't, I know Andrew just came in the room, so I don't know if he's ready to go. If we put, his would be the briefer of the two, I expect. Is that all right, Andrew?
No, that's wonderful. Yes, I can, I don't think I need to necessarily bring anything up. I can keep it relatively brief. For the record, my name is Andrew Arsenal. Business address is 35 New England Business Center Drive in Andover, Massachusetts. And we were the transportation engineers for the proponent. We got the initial responses from environmental partners, and we went through them. They were in general agreement with our study. They had a couple of, what I would consider small questions and clarifications that they had, yes, that they wanted some things clarified. I guess just going through them one by one, the existing conditions. They just wanted to know when specifically the molding company that the previous tenant had moved out. They moved out in May 2019. They wanted to get into some of the more technical details on how the trip generation calculations were done, and we provided that clarification. It was mostly technical in nature. I don't know if it's worth really getting into tonight or waiting until next week when the peer reviewers is there to kind of have the back and forth. But it was just in how we developed the trips for it and our rationale behind it. Those were the next two comments, and then the closing out. One of their comments was that we did not study intersections external to the driveway and just based on the amount of trips expected for this proposed use compared to the former manufacturing use. It did not justify expanding the study area. And we provided that response to environmental partners. And then the last comment they had was about, it was about the site distances at the driveways. And we agreed, we wanted to, we wanted to see no signs, landscaping, any kind of plantings that would interfere into the driver's eye. Just keep those out of the way of the driver's side to open it up and increase safety for everyone. That was really the crux of their comments. I know they can, I don't want to speak for them. I think they were in general agreement, and they were mostly just clarification points with our initial study.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from board members? I can't see everybody, so just make sure you speak up if you do. Nope.
Not here.
Okay. Okay, I don't have additional questions here. Thank you.
So I can take, I could do a brief overview of the site-related comments as well, if the board would like.
Sure. Well, let me pull that up for you.
Sure. I'll keep it somewhat brief, too. I think, you know, unless the board has specific questions, I think the most, you know, the best use of everyone's time would be to review in a little bit more detail once the peer reviewer is involved in the conversation, or to specifically solicit, you know, any of their concerns and address them, rather than, you know, just kind of take the time to read through all these one by one. Generally speaking, the comments were of a similar nature to what Andrew just described relative to traffic. Environmental partners had some general comments and suggestions for maintenance-related items that should be worked into the documentation that we've provided as part of the application. All of their comments have been, you know, we feel that they were relatively minor in nature, and they've been addressed, and obviously that's reflected here in a little bit greater detail as far as what the changes actually were. But again, generally speaking, there were some maintenance-related items, some minor stuff like, you know, depth of loam and seed, some landscape, some landscape buffer suggestions. Let's see, a couple items will be addressed in the future under the preparation of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for the project that's required under the US EPA because of land disturbance of greater than one acre. There's a couple of comments on the sewer force main design that will be completed with coordination with the town, obviously, and DPW. The plans really only capture it in concept at this point, just to document how the building's sewer connection will actually, is intended to be addressed. So again, that complete design will be, would be performed in concert with the town and their requirements as the project moves forward. There was a couple of site lighting clarifications that we worked with the lighting designer to put together. Simple cut sheets were added to the plans to show what the lighting fixtures look like. Confirmation of the mounted heights was included on an update to the photometrics plan that's included with the, as a part of the site plan package, and confirmation that the fixtures are dark sky compliant, too. Let's see. There were a couple of comments related to buffers from budding properties, which we, we've addressed, the kind of, the response there kind of relates to the variance that was granted by the ZBA, as well as the wetland resource area that surrounds the property to the rear and to, I believe, the east side. So just kind of providing a lot of natural, a significant natural buffer there. Let's see. There's a couple of parking-related comments as well. We didn't feel necessary to leverage what environmental partners was sort of documenting here, that the suggestion was really that, you know, it's noted on the plans that the applicant doesn't necessarily need the 38 parking spaces required by zoning. We've kept the design the same because those spaces were added within existing paved area in the back of the building. So that, there was kind of two comments on that. One related to the additional parking that's provided, and another really directed to the Planning Board, just documenting the fact that the board is able to authorize a 30% reduction of off-street parking. But again, we didn't feel that that was necessary, so the comment was acknowledged, but no real revisions to the design was necessitated by that. The existing driveway width was just noted as wider than is preferred by the bylaw. It's an existing condition that we're maintaining for the purposes of, you know, safe vehicle entry and exit from the site, especially with the larger trucks that come out of here from time to time. Let's see, suggestion to add a bike rack. That was added to the plans. And then getting to, on page five, the stormwater management standards, environmental partners had kind of noted, you know, on an individual basis, all the standards that are, all 10 standards that are part of the state stormwater policy, and kind of had made, there was a couple of recommendations in there, but generally, they were saying that we had met all the performance standards of each of those state stormwater standards there. Let's see. Moving past that, the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, there was just clarification warranted about the buffer zone distances. And again, this project has already been granted an order of conditions, so we've completed that process with the Conservation Commission back in 2019. The clarification was really the buffer zone distances. Environmental partners had noted the current buffer zones are greater than what's shown in the plan and what the design accommodates, and the clarification was, was that, you know, the application or the bylaw at the time had enacted buffer zones that are consistent with the design, and they've since been changed. So that was the reason for that discrepancy. Let's see. Notes, notes added, the environmental partners wanted some notes added just to make sure the infiltration basin is protected from construction equipment. They had a suggestion that stone for pipe ends surrounding that basin, the infiltration basin in a couple of locations was consistent with MASTOT standards. So we documented in here that we will include that as part of the specification when the specifications are prepared for the project. Couple other minor, just manhole size comments and peak rate of runoff, time span calculation comments, which were incorporated into the model with no change. Upsized the French drain that surrounds the building expansion to provide greater detention volume, and that addressed the concerns that environmental partners had in the 25 and 100-year storms here. Let's see. We've added a construction entrance and described the maintenance practices for the construction period, in the construction period pollution prevention and erosion and sedimentation control plan. Let's see. Again, more just minor design comments, some of which were either, you know, required minor change here or there, or will in the future. Others were acknowledged. A gate was added at the rear of the site to allow maintenance for the flared end section that discharges stormwater in the existing location back toward that wetland behind the site. And again, minor comments on the last page here. We changed curb types a little bit to match more consistently with the town's requirements. Again, lighting cut sheets were provided. On comment number three here, I do just want to clarify, and I apologize for the confusion here. This comment is actually replaced with the anticipated use of a trash compactor serving the facility. So the site plans that are attached to this letter reflect that. Unfortunately, the comment didn't reflect that change, so I just want to clarify there that what we initially didn't intend to need a dumpster for, with further conversation with the applicant, actually, you know, turned out that a trash compactor is going to be the anticipated path forward there. So again, space for that has been, has been shown on the site plans, on the layout materials plan, describes what that is, and a detail for the pad is included in there as well. So if you go to, looking at sheet C2, you'll see that change.
Sorry, this is so small.
That's okay. If you go just one more, that should be the one. Then if we look just behind the parking lot, Carrie, against the building, you'll see clouded is a call-out for a trash compactor pad.
I see.
Yeah. So again, I apologize for the confusion there. That was a mistake on our part. And then I believe there was one final, one final comment. Another one related to the design of the sewer force main. So again, that'll be, as the project moves forward, we'll work with the town to prepare an appropriate design for the sewer force main to serve the building.
Okay. Anything else you wanted to mention?
Nothing on my end.
Okay. Board member, oh, actually, Fred, do you have any comments for, or Kathy, any comments on this? Did you get a chance to read the responses as well?
I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay. Kathy, anything from you?
No, I've read through both, you know, obviously through both documents, and I don't have any additional questions or any concerns.
Okay. Board members, any additional questions? Related to the information presented?
No.
No?
No. I had one question about, just in mentioning, I don't know if it was in the buffers or it's just to mention that in some sort of picture or snapshot, it didn't look like there was a whole lot of landscape in between the residential area, and I'm trying to find it now on the fly, but from the building to the residential area, there wasn't a lot of either landscaping or vegetation or something to that effect. And I thought I saw two conflicting things. Could you just talk about the vegetation between the areas? What I'm just wondering about is, from a noise perspective, is there vegetation there? Or is there nothing there? Or if you could just describe that a little bit?
Yeah, there is vegetation there, and I don't know if you, if it would help to look at the plan as I'm describing this, too, it might, it might give a little clearer picture. So there is existing vegetation there today. There's also, between the site, there's also railroad and the aqueduct parcels. We have a couple hundred feet of space there between our site and the residential uses there in the neighborhood, Coolidge Circle. The, as the board's aware, the ZBA granted a variance back in July of 2019 that allows the building to sit within the 100-foot residential district setback that you see crossing through the building expansion on the west side. So currently, the closest portion of the building is about 23 feet from that property line. So I think that's, that was kind of what generated this comment. The design does intend to maintain as much of that existing vegetation as possible by, you know, doing what we can to limit grading and just other disturbance to that area. Obviously, some clearing needs to be done to make way for the building and to provide maintenance access for the stormwater basin behind the expansion for, you know, for perpetual maintenance needs. So existing vegetation will be maintained to the extent practicable, and then, you know, what is cleared is intended to be really just lawn area. So, you know, again, we're doing what we can to keep what's there and landscape up the space that's left, but obviously can't, with the variance that was granted and the proximity of the building to the property line, aren't able to meet that 50-foot buffer requirement.
Okay.
I just have a question along those lines, too.
Sure.
When you said there's access to the back to the detention basin, is that just walking access, or does a truck need to get around back?
It's usually, on a basin this size, it'd usually be some kind of small piece of equipment. The space is limited there, and again, part of, part of the limited access path around the building is, you know, due to the preservation of the existing vegetation, you know, that is on that side of the site. So it's typically done with some kind of, you know, smaller equipment that can get in there. It's really just to clean out the bottom as it gets silted up over time and do, you know, little repairs here and there.
So like a mini excavator type thing?
Something like that, yep.
Okay. Amy, did you have something else there?
No. How many feet actually is there from the corner of the building to the lot line?
23 feet.
Okay.
And it's worth noting, too, that you can see it on this plan where the existing tree line sort of cuts through the western edge of the building expansion. The majority of this area is largely lawn area today because that's where the facility's existing septic system sits. That leach field actually extends out away from the building to the west toward the railroad. So if you're, if you're familiar, you can kind of see it when you drive, when you drive by the site on Whitney Street. But it's just worth noting that the majority of this expansion sits within an area that, you know, has no mature vegetation. There's a little bit of clearing required beyond that to, you know, for the building itself and for, like I said, the access around it. But a lot of that area is, is kind of, the building is kind of sitting right within the cleared area today.
Okay. Amy, did you have something else there? No. Okay, other questions? Oh, Millie, are you speaking? No, okay.
Actually, I've got one more. With the 23 feet, if there was a row of like, a lot of times, it seems like design review uses like fir trees or the big fir trees that grow quickly. Is there room to put a row of those in and still get the mini excavator around to the back?
It would be, it'll be tight, because where the, where the corner of the building is close to the property line, it'd be tight to do. I mean, with 23 feet, you're trying to maneuver a piece of equipment back there. I mean, we can certainly look at that. I just don't know, I don't know how much of a visual screen, if that's the concern. I don't know how much of a visual screen it would provide, because a lot of the area that's off the property to the west is actually, is higher than the site.
Or maybe if, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here, but maybe a fence, you know, some sort of...
Yeah, we've explored some options. I think we've, at the end of the day, we've landed on that same note, Amy, about the fact that the area to the west is higher, so the fence almost becomes useless because you're really just, you're really just putting a fence between a slope and the building.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of access, because my friends grew up back there, just to, and kids play on the aqueduct, and they walk along the railroad tracks, and I don't know if this, you know, that's x-rays and high power. I'm thinking more of a fence. So say there are kids playing on the railroad tracks and the aqueduct. It was more of a buffer between the industrial property and then the residential area.
Sure, sure. So more of a security thing than anything else?
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking more, so it's not an attraction or a buffer, a barrier.
Yeah, I can, I can review that with the applicant, too, and see kind of what the options might be in that area, and we can, we can put some thoughts together and discuss next time if that would help.
Yeah, I don't know what the other board members think.
I think it's a good point. Did Mike Corelli get dropped from the call? I thought I saw his hand raises if he wasn't in the call anymore. Do we see him in here?
So I just moved him back in. He did get dropped at one point, and yeah, he rejoined.
Okay. There he is. All right. Sorry about that, Mike. I don't know what happened.
Can I comment?
Sure.
So Rich, maybe you can go back and talk to the applicant instead of, you know, a metal fence or something see-through, maybe a six-foot, you know, white vinyl fence or something that sort of defines the property, and then, do you know what I'm saying? I think that would be, look nice. I know what you're saying is the topography of the land on the other side is much higher. But then when you come to the bottom of it and you know the property line, you've got this large white fence that, you know, kids, you know, you're not going to see through it. It's just going to be a nice-looking fence there, and I think that might do the trick.
Yeah, let us explore some options, and we can sort of report back the recommendations. Yeah, let us explore some options and we can we can sort of report back the the recommendations on that front next time.
Mike, did you have something you want to say? I keep seeing you raise your hand. I'm not sure if you did you. You're welcome to speak if you have something to add.
Hi, yes, through the chair. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we do typically provide some size type of security fencing. Along perimeter and in in different areas of the facility. So I'm sure something will be back there to. Prevent unwanted. Access in into the grounds of the facility, but that that's the standard protocol for STERIS.
Great. Any other questions? Anything from you, Anthony?
Nope.
Millie? Nope. Millie, I can't. We can't hear you, Millie. There you go. Anything from you, Millie?
No, nothing.
Okay, Amy, do you have any additional questions? No. Okay, Michelle, was that it for you?
All set.
Okay, just just from me. So. I see here, this is a chiller pad and this is a sound absorbing wall. So that's good. Where? Where on this would the concrete plant actually sit and what space does that fit?
If you, Carrie, if you change, go to the next sheet, you can actually see the limits of that in the exist within the existing paved area. Towards the rear of the site. It's that dashed. It's a light dashed line. It's kind of tucked off to the to the eastern side of the site.
So am I looking at?
So that if you're if you're looking at the, yeah, that loading dock area there, yep. That's all existing pavement today. Right where your cursor is just just a little bit to the right, there's that light dashed line. Where you are is where that's the closest point to the building that it gets. And if you kind of follow it, it actually, you know, yeah, it goes, it extends around the kind of that half of that paved area. So the idea there is that it sits in the paved area. So we're not, you know, we're not, we're not expanding the the disturbance any more than necessary. And then it also. Allows for better, you know, controls over the water that comes out of the plant or any runoff that comes out of that area, I should say.
Okay. Then related to this, I don't have any other questions at this time. And it sounds like board members don't have additional questions. Staff didn't have additional questions. Additionally, I wanted to, we also received some information from town council. I'm gonna stop sharing this for a second. There we go. Okay, so I want to make sure we got that covered. Is there anything else the applicant would like to add regarding either one of the documents we just reviewed? So it sounds like that Kathy is the next step for that. The has a peer reviewer, but has that been submitted to the peer reviewer as well? The responses?
Yes, yes, the responses have been submitted to the peer reviewer. You know, both responses, the one from Vanessa and from VHB. And so along with reviewing those two and the. Outstanding questions in the November, you know, again, the November two thousand nineteen memo, there's, I think it's six questions. That were asked of peer review. So those are being. Explored and and responded to by the peer reviewer. Some of the some of those, some of the information was presented by CN, but they're they're gonna, you know, pull it out and. You know, specifically answer the the six questions the way that they were asked. And so they should be, if it's anticipated that they would be ready. You know, in advance of the of your next meeting on April twentieth. And then Carrie, I know you're gonna go into that next, but then also just in the, you know, the same memo. That the planning board did in November of two thousand nineteen, there's those three questions for town council. And like you said, you have the memo from town council regarding those.
Okay, so I just want to clarify though. The you when you just say six questions, it just makes me a little nervous because I'm looking at the mar- the final March tenth memo that we submitted.
The in the March tenth memo. There weren't any specific questions for the peer reviewer if. Unless I'm very mistaken, but. I'm just looking that up now.
Sure. And then while Kathy's looking that up, the other thing was on, we were coming back around to was the noise in from this noise study from the Waltham firm. I don't know if they submitted that or where where does that stand?
So the the data has been collected in the field. The the it's tech environmental who's preparing that that study. So they've they've collected data in the field, they've built their model and the the team is analyzing with them some of the options for the sound mitigation measures. And as soon as soon as some decisions are made there, they'll be able to finalize a report which we can provide to the to the planning board.
Okay, is that also on target for April twentieth or not sure?
I'm not sure offhand, but we can we can look into that and follow up.
Okay.
Carrie, on that. On that. Second memo that the planning board sent to STERIS. Those, I mean, it was supplied, you know, to the peer reviewer as part of the package, but those questions were all for STERIS.
Let's see.
Because that that memo was, I mean, just as the November one was, but you know, these these memos were written from the planning board to STERIS. For STERIS to provide this information. And then, but specifically in your November, with the first memo that the board put together. There were separate questions, you know, broken out for the peer reviewer and for town council.
Okay, so hold on a second. Let me make sure we're looking at the same thing. Let's see. So I do have. The separate council, the separate questions for town council. So we got that tonight. So are those the six questions you were talking about, Kathy?
No, the six questions I'm talking about are are on page if if anyone's looking at the November planning board memo. The planning board had six questions, six, you know, specific questions for the peer reviewer. So it starts on the bottom of page two and goes into page three. And so those are the those are the questions that that the peer reviewer did not specifically. Address, you know, separately at your, I think it was two meetings ago when when we met with STERIS. So they are going through those six questions. And then, like I said, and then there was those three questions for town council.
Okay. So let's see. But but we had wanted the peer reviewers to review the answers to the questions provided to the March tenth memo.
They the peer reviewers have the responses to both the November. Memo and the Mar- March memo.
Okay, so we have responses to the March tenth memo that the peer reviewers are are looking at.
Not, well, I mean, they they reviewed them, but they're not preparing a a specific response to the planning board, just just like they didn't prepare a. Specific response to the November memo.
Well, that was the problem with their responses. They didn't answer the questions they had.
Well, right, but the questions that. At least that that the peer reviewer and I concluded were those six questions. In the November memo.
All right. I just want to make sure absolutely certain we're talking about the same thing before we break or anything like that.
So there's, you know, again, there were the two memos that the planning board sent to STERIS. STERIS provided responses to both of those memos. The one was in November of two thousand nineteen, the other one was in March of two thousand twenty.
Yep.
And specifically in the November memo, the planning board called out, there were six questions for the peer reviewer.
Yeah.
So those were the six questions that the peer reviewer did not. Specifically address in their peer review.
Okay.
And then, so it's those six questions that they are working on now between them and the. The other company, you know, the subcontractor CN. So there there wasn't anything. In in addition to that.
So then we have, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, as I understood it from your.
Okay, so then we we got a response from them on March tenth that we asked for all this information. And as part of the. Peer review, aren't they reviewing the answers to the questions provided? They may not be getting the answers, but how do I know? The the issue was, how am I to know in these responses what I'm reading? Because I'm not a radiation expert, so. You could say whatever you wanted and I wouldn't be able to interpret that myself.
Well, well, right, but what I mean, what so what they provided to you at your first meeting was was CN. You know, responded to 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 their portion of the of the peer review, which was. Basically, all the technical information about, you know, what's going on inside the building. And then the EP or environmental partners. They reviewed, you know, the 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 site plan, I mean, the specific site plan. And provided you with that information. So that was in one memo. Then there was a traffic memo from from their, I mean, you know, in-house their traffic folks. And then there was the third memo from CN.
Okay.
Then at the last, so then at that planning board meeting. My understanding and Scott Turner's, you know, the the lead from Environmental Partners. Our understanding was is that you wanted the. You had asked for, you know, the those six questions. I I just keep saying six. I mean, we didn't discuss six questions tha- that night, but you talked about the November memo. And that's where there's those six specific questions from the planning board.
Okay, that's fine. That that may make sense. I just want to make sure so that we're all looking at the right thing. Does that make sense to board members from what your?
I don't know. I mean, I thought we made that huge list of questions and we went through it with a fine tooth comb. Over and over again. I I would have to go back and watch the video. But I thought that we wanted to hire a peer reviewer. And I thought we were told that the questions first go to STERIS. They answer the questions and then, like you said, the peer reviewer reviews them.
Yeah, look at the answers.
I mean, that was the only purpose for them.
Right, and that's what they provided you at the last meeting.
So they answered all these questions on the March tenth memo last meeting?
No, STERIS answered those questions.
Right, I know, but I I agree with what Carrie's saying is the whole purpose of these memos were, we were told that the process of the town does. Is to send it out to the applicant first, they get the answers, and then the peer reviewer reviews it. The answers.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that that occurred for your your last meeting with, which I again, I think was, I don't have the date in front of me, but March, the beginning of March.
Right, so they they reviewed this March tenth memo. I thought the question we had, I mean, I'll have to go back. And watch the meeting for the last meeting, but I thought the concern we had was that the. Radiation expert didn't see these questions and had to get back to us. I guess that's what I thought we were waiting for tonight and I can go back and listen again, but.
So which which? After the last meeting, it was my understanding that the board. At that meeting, the board specifically said to the peer reviewer, you know, what about the 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 questions? That that were in our, you know, in our memo. And so those, so there's six questions that the planning board specifically called out for the peer reviewer. And tho- those were the six that they did not include in their memos to you. In the in the EP and CN memos to you. So, so again, my understanding and the peer reviewers' understanding was that that's that was the additional information you were looking for. Was for them to go through those six questions in in from your November memo.
Okay, well, why don't we, if they come back when I see the six you're talking about, so we'll we'll see what they come back with for these questions. It was not clear to me that they had seen the the responses to the March tenth memo, so maybe that's the part that. Just needs to be hooked up a little bit. If they have not seen the answers to the questions to the March tenth memo, can we?
Trust me, they they have them. I mean, they 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 received them, you know, immediately. I mean, if, you know, they they probably have six or seven emails. With them repeatedly in those emails. So I mean, none none of that information is is new. What my understanding was, was that they that they missed. Specifically in your November memo, at least that's what I thought was my direction from you. At the last meeting. So I mean, we need to clarify that because.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, similar to Amy, we went through that whole memo process to make sure that we had everything out on the table and that was everything out on the table. And I don't know if this is, this November memo may just. Cover it by way of them answering these questions and that may be fine, but I just want to make sure that, you know. We went through the process. So that we say right in this memo on March tenth, upon receipt of a response from STERIS, we will proceed with the hiring of a peer review consultant. So the March tenth memo was relevant to this entire process. I so it sounds like they got it, which is good. You're saying they did receive the responses to the March tenth memo.
Oh, yeah, they absolutely. I mean, that was, that's the whole, that that was, that was the whole package. About peer review was was the two planning board memos and the two sets of responses from STERIS. And then, you know, the actual site plan.
Okay, so if they actually did speak, maybe the way they presented, they did it in a way that did not make, did not connect the dots well. For the planning board. I don't feel that I received the information that I. Maybe it was just the format that made it difficult to to understand what they were trying to present. So maybe it's just a matter of if. It sounds like they're gonna map it out a little better for the next time around. So that may solve some of that a little bit.
So let let me, let me con- confirm then. You you are. Well, let me put it this way. Are are you expecting? The peer reviewer to have gone through? All all of your questions from the November memo and the March memo?
Well, it sounds like to me that they're answering the questions for November, which are, hold on, I'm gonna show what I'm looking at so everybody can see what I'm looking at. All right, here we go. Here's November. So Kathy, when you're saying six questions, it sounds like you're talking about one through six right here.
Correct, right.
Okay. And then, so this is, this is what we're, we're on the same page so far with the the questions that the board have. So we had requested on, so on March tenth, we went through the hearings back and forth to work with STERIS to come out with, just asking for additional. Information and that was provided to us.
Yes.
So it was my understanding, all of that, all of the information provided to us was going, getting all in a package off to the peer review. So. The March tenth questions, March tenth responses, that all went to. So the March 10th questions, March 10th responses, that all went to the peer reviewers, right?
Yes, yep.
So then I guess I would just want, they don't, I mean, they're still answering these questions here, but for anything that, any responses that came, I would expect if they reviewed it, they either agree with it or they would say that doesn't make sense or something to that effect. Like, yep, this looks good, these look like reasonable responses, this makes sense. Because the whole problem was, we didn't have this, the skill set to be able to say, oh, that answer makes sense to me. Like, you know, what, what's the MEV capacity of an accelerator in the Switzerland site? Doesn't, I can't, if you two could tell me anything, I don't, I wouldn't be able to tell you if that's reasonable or not. So the whole purpose was just to have someone review the answers and be able to, you know, validate for, you know? So it sounds like, is that where we, is that, does that sound like we're still in the same process?
Well, uh, uh, yeah, my, my understanding was that they had done that for you, for your, prior meeting with, with STERIS. And that the only thing that was outstanding were these questions in the November memo.
I mean, at the last meeting, it sounded to me like they, the, that Scott was surprised that there wasn't a March 10th memo. So I don't know, I don't know if any other board members re- remember differently or similarly, but that seemed to be the conundrum last time is that Scott seemed unaware of a March 10th memo.
Carrie, I agree with you. That was my understanding that they were not clear that they were supposed to look at the other questions that were addressed to STERIS specifically and that they weren't prepared to discuss them.
That's what my, my, I have a highlight note right at the top of my page that says, peer reviewer didn't read or validate. So that was where I was too.
So maybe if we can just make sure we sync up with that and then, um, get that all in place properly.
Yep, and Carrie too, maybe that's where we'll still have our, a, a Zoom call with them.
Perfect.
Which, okay.
Um, okay, so then looking at, um, we did receive information back from town council. Um, I don't know if everyone, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen for a second. Did everyone have a chance to review the information sent back?
Yeah.
Yes.
So a couple of things, I, I personally am looking for, um, just clarification on. I don't know the best form to do that, um, to either invite town council to clarify or to send questions or what the best format is. I don't know, did anyone have questions about this or no?
Is this the memo from April 5th?
Yep, the April 5th memo from town council.
Okay.
Yep, did you have any questions, Millie?
Um, I, I mean, I guess I had some questions that were more clarifications and I don't know if they can be answered without him there, but.
Yeah. I had some clarification questions as well. So what is the best way? Is it better to hear what the clarifications would be or is it better to invite him to come and speak to them further?
I mean, I, I mean, I think if you have, I mean, as we've done in the past, if there's, if there's questions that you, that you have of town council, you know, to, you know, t- t- talk about it tonight and,
Sure.
and let's get those questions to town council so that he can respond to them. And then, of course, you know, if you want to have him come in, um, you know, I'm assuming you're gonna continue this to April 20th and we'll find out, um, you know, if he's available on the 20th to, to, to come in.
Okay, great. Um, do any board members have any clarification questions that they wanna put out there? Anthony, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay, Amy.
No, I don't think so. I think I understood what he was saying, but it looked, I guess, to me, it sounded like he said you can, I guess that's the only question I would clarify is, it sounds like he said a condition of hours of operation of the concrete plant could be added to the special permit was the way I read it. The way I read it was he said that the concrete plant did not need its own site plan, but you could contact the DEP for guidance on concrete plant since it's not regularly done in Northborough. And that, the way I'm reading it, I'm not sure if this is what he meant, was that you could also condition the hours of operation of the concrete plant. Is that the what you heard, Kathy?
Yeah, and it's part of the, the groundwater special permit.
Okay.
So that, so that's on page, uh, two or three.
That's, it's page three. Yeah, the bottom paragraph.
Yeah, the bottom paragraph. So that, yeah, he said, where the applicant is requesting a groundwater protection overlay district special permit, the planning board may consider such other, uh, such other limitations of time as evidence, blah, blah, blah. You know, and that, that's in the same paragraph where, where he's talking about, you know, such as, you know, setting the, the hours of the concrete plant, which is, I think originally that had been discussed, you know, that that would follow the bylaw.
Yeah, that's what I read from his memo.
And that was one of the questions I had to clarify was the element of time. Was that for the hours of operation or the duration of the temporary element? Can we, because now it comes under special permit, can we, can we set a timeframe as a condition to work within for, um, like a duration?
For, for how long the plant is, is operating?
Yeah.
You know, you would need that information from the consultant, obviously.
Yeah, okay, to work with, yeah.
Me. Um, and then, you know, you could, you could work that into a, a condition, but it, you know, it's probably gonna be dependent on weather and temperature. I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, maybe their attorney or, or.
Yeah, Stephen, sure, go ahead.
I just want to remind the board, we had the construct, temporary construction plant operator in before the board. It was probably over a year ago. His business interest, right, is to get to as many sites as possible. He's incentivized to get the work done quickly and get out. So limiting the duration, I don't know if it, I, I mean, I guess I'd, I'd have to hear what the rationale is, but I just think it's important to remember that, um, he, the, the, there is no lag time, if you will, or extended duration of the temporary concrete plant at the site. It's, it'll only be there as long as it's necessary and then he's moving on to the next job site.
I think there was just concern at that time. The neighbors came in and there was a lot of concern about, you know, first it was a 12 month and 12 to 18 months and there was just concern of noise, dust, debris, um, impact on the neighborhood. For, you know, it's not your ordinary temporary period of time. If, if we're talking 12 to 18 months, we're talking a year to a year and a half, so, you know.
I, I, I don't have the duration, but, um, also that's the benefit, as we discussed when that was before the board, the benefit was that that's trucks not on the road, right? That's the benefit of the temporary plant to get that.
Yeah, that's a great point. And actually, that's one thing that town council had sent too. That he had commented about the associated construction impacts and comparison of impacts resulting from concrete delivery and installation not furnished through the use of an onsite plant. Like the ability to look at that and compare what is the impact to that neighborhood, um, one way or the other, I guess. Did you get a copy of this, Stephen, by the way, this memo?
I do have a copy of it.
Yeah, I sent one to the applicant.
Okay, great. Um, I, I guess my clarifications would be around, so, so number one, I want to go back to the application itself. So Kathy, I've asked this before and I just want to make sure that the application has the correct permits on it in the first place, so.
Absolutely does, yeah.
Yep, so this is a site plan with special permit approval.
No, it's a site plan and a groundwater special permit.
So, so that's.
It's an allowed use in the industrial zone.
No, that's okay. I hear what you're saying, but in our, in our bylaws, a special permit kicks off site plan with special permit review.
No, that's a convenience for an applicant that has a use that's allowed by special permit, that they can have both reviewed concurrently.
But you are viewing both concurrently.
This use is allowed as a right.
I don't know, Kathy, this is what we just went through with a couple of other applications and that's how we described it.
No, it's, I know, it's not, it's a site plan review. I've objected every time you discuss the use.
I just wanted, I, you're, I'm, every time I read this hearing, it's a continued public hearing for 425 Whitney Street, special permit site plan approval and special permit for groundwater protection overlay. I've read this probably seventeen times.
I don't prepare that. I prepared the application.
Oh, I, I know, I think we gotta check this, Kathy, because I've, I've been asking about this several times now.
I know.
Well.
How do you convert an allowed use to a specially permitted use?
No, no, your use isn't a special permit. I'm just saying the process that follow, I'm so sorry. I'm not saying your use is a special permit at all. But when we, when a special permit is involved with a site plan review, it kicks off in our bylaws, special site plan with special permit review.
I disagree, if you, I disagree. If you read the groundwater protection overlay district,
Yeah.
bylaw, it says the use is allowed in the underlying district are allowed.
That's fine. I'm not saying that your use is not, your use is not a special permit. I'm saying that in our bylaws, anytime we have a special permit with site plan review, in our bylaws, it kicks off special permit, I'm say plan with special permit review. I don't know, we just made another applicant resubmit their application to do the same.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not applying for a special permit for the use.
I know you're not.
I'm applying for groundwater protection special permit.
I realize that.
Yeah.
So Carrie, I think right, you know, right in the beginning of, of town council's memo, you know, he states that, that it's an application for site plan approval and for a groundwater protection overlay.
Right, because, because that's what's written on the application incorrectly. We literally made Bartlett Street, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Not incorrect.
We literally made Bartlett Street, resubmit an application in the same exact scenario because they did not file properly. So that, so we're going to apply different rules to a different applicant. We, we, we need to get to the bottom of that because we literally just did this, the whole process.
Where is that? Well, I, I, I don't want to judge my application by what others do.
Of course not, of course not, but we need to apply the bylaw, hold on, everybody quiet. We need to apply the bylaws the same way to every applicant. We can't pick and choose how we apply the bylaws. So if we're gonna make one applicant do something but not the other, that's, that's not right. We, this special, this has been, I've been asking about this for a very long time, that this be clarified. It's in our public hearing notice, it's in our, it's every agenda that I read. This is the application we, we have. That's gotta be solved because we can't apply the bylaws to different people in different ways and that's all I'm gonna say about it.
But I, I, I think Carrie, back in, um, and, and I don't, I, I, I can pull the memo, um, while we're sitting here, although I don't know how, you know, effective that will be, but, um, the, you know, the, this question has been going around and around.
Yeah.
And town council, you know, provide.
I'm reading at page 714 in our bylaws, under site plan. This is under, and Bob's written it with the last application I've seen, 703050A2. A special permit with site plan approval shall be required for any use requiring a special permit. In, in which case, a special permit granting authority shall also act as site plan approval authority. This is written on every other application that has groundwater permit and a site plan approval. I.
That, that's correct, that's correct, but I think that the, that we have that memo from town council from a few months ago.
The town council was told it was that, that it was a site plan approval. I would like to know from town council, why we apply different rules to different applicants for the same exact scenario? Why we would apply a greater percentage than, that's what I want to know.
I, I don't, well, that's up to the board, but I believe that the, that in town councils, and like I said, I just don't have it in front of me and I can, you know, if you want to pause here, I can certainly find it for the board. But he had sent you two memos regarding special permit with site plan approval and explaining how in the past, the board has, has interpreted it two different ways to apply. One was to apply, in some instances, to apply the special permit criteria. And then in other instances, different boards, different makeup, the board didn't apply the special permit criteria. And I believe his conclusion was, is that it, you don't apply the special permit criteria to the site plan approval because it's, it, 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 you, you, because it's, it's a site plan.
I'm not even talking about criteria. I'm just talking about actually having the right thing on the plan, which should be, it should be as with every other application, 703050A2. Site plan with special permit review. The, I, I, criteria aside, we at least need to have the right items identified in the bylaws and they're not. And, and I don't think it's fair when we do things differently for different applicants, which is my continued issue whenever we go down this road, that we're not using the same rules for everybody. Oh no, here it is. It's on page 717. It's special permit with site plan approval. That's what we have everybody else do. And we. In a fair manner. I don't know if other board members can't have any comments on that or, if you remember, other board members remember differently, then please speak up. That's my opinion.
I, I think we need to be consistent.
Yeah, and I don't think it's us, um, I think the interpretation sheets, you know, it's how it comes to us. I don't, we're not calling the shots, we haven't been, but that's how it's sent to us.
Yeah, the name, do you have anything?
No.
Michelle.
Michelle, you're on mute.
Okay, Harry, Michelle. Okay, here I am, okay. So Kathy, I'm just going through some emails from legal counsel. Are you looking for the email that was sent to the board on February 16th?
I don't remember the date of the email, but it was.
Those questions for town council on the zero, zero Bartlett Street definitive subdivision?
It was, it was two memos that he sent to the board.
Okay, because this one talks about, um, special permit with groundwater three. That was one memo that was sent on February 16th?
Yeah, they're back to back memos.
No, I'm not even talking about criteria. I'm just saying, we made another applicant go back and refile their application. They filed in December the wrong thing. They were, this was the same exact application. We made them refile.
Carrie, which one are you talking about? If you can just clarify which applicant are you talking about?
We had a zero, the zero Bartlett application, they filed in December. They only filed for site plan approval. We made them refile in February to, to reflect their, we said to them, it's on record and I will go back and transcribe it exactly, that anytime there's a special permit, it kicks off the site plan approval, the site plan of special permit process. And we made them refile their application in February to reflect.
I know, I'm just trying to find, Kathy says that there's legal counsel has addressed it twice and I just want the board to know back, to go back and look at their February 16th emails.
But Michelle, I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking about the fact that we made an applicant go back and refile.
I know, but Carrie, I'm just giving a point that legal counsel has sent emails to you. Kathy was looking for them, she couldn't find them. I'm helping you guys know that legal counsel sent two emails in February.
Yeah, it would have been 2020 because it wasn't for the subdivision. It was for parcel H.
Anyway, I think.
Carrie, can I just add one point on that, uh, special permit that you're referring to for zero Bartlett Street? When they usually filed their application under groundwater, they neglected to file that the portion of the driveway went across groundwater area one. So they had to go back and refile the groundwater special permit to include that the driveway was going across groundwater area one.
Correct, they had two problems. That was the second problem with it. But the first problem was the special permit site plan review. I mean, we don't have to solve it now, but we'll have to solve it before the end and I'll go back and pull it all and we can sit here and look at it together. Yes.
May I, through the chair, may I speak on the issue?
Yeah.
So we, we spent a lot of time before we filed to make sure we're filing for the appropriate relief. Met with the building inspector, met with, uh, the planner. And Amy is correct, the building inspector is the interpreter of the zoning bylaws, so, um, um, we filed for the right relief. It's site plan review. As the board knows, I've objected to all the analysis of the use inside the building as if it was a special permit. I kept saying, it's site plan review. And the, it's the groundwater special permit. I read the section on special permit with site plan approval. Number four reads, if the proponent submits a single application for the use requiring a special permit with site plan approval, the special permit granting authority shall review and render a decision on site plan as part of the special permit process. That, in my mind, that means if your use requires a special permit, our use in the industrial zone is allowed as a right. There is a why in the table of uses.
I'm not.
The need for a special permit. Well, but you're saying that it's a special permit site plan. I'm saying that's when your use is by special permit and you have a site plan. Our use is allowed and we have a special permit for groundwater. That's, that's the distinction.
I'm not asking for a special permit on your use. I'm just saying that you, you're missing the, you don't have the right elements filled out on the application. I'm just asking for it to be corrected.
I have the application. I checked site plan approval and special permit groundwater protection. That's the correct relief. Yes, what, what, what relief did I miss?
Anytime.
There is no box, by the way, for special permit site plan on the application form.
Well, I then, that's something that Bob's gonna have to address. I'm gonna pull, I'm gonna go back and pull exact, the exact language that came when we talked about this very thing. Listen, what I care about is that we apply the bylaws the same way to everybody and.
But you don't interpret, the, the building inspector is the zoning interpreter, interpreter for the town. So if I didn't get the right relief when we applied for a building permit, just like if we apply for a building permit, we don't have the variance from the ZBA, it won't be issued. If I apply for a building permit, I've got site plan approval and a groundwater special permit.
All right, well, we don't have to solve that now.
Well, by the way, you know, this has been over a year with the, with the same application to hear now that you think.
No, I've been thinking for a long time. Kathy, I've seen multiple communications on this. That, that we need to get down to the bottom of this. This is not the first time I brought it up.
Not with me. I have not heard it.
Well, then, I, I don't, I don't know.
You absolutely have, have asked me, Carrie. And I've spoken with the attorney and, and he is stating what he has stated all along. So I, I, I can't, you know, as staff person, I can't make an applicant change or not change their application.
Okay, what I would like to find clarified, so that I know for the future, is I would like to have a discussion and find out why we had zero Bartlet go back and reapply, submit a new application from December to February for the same issue that no longer seems to apply. And if there's a reason for that, that's fine, but I just wanna know for my own benefit of making sure we're doing this properly. Do they have, is there a reason for that? And if there was a different reason, that's fine, but I would just like to understand the different reason. So that I don't erroneously assume that, that needs to be done here if there's a whole different reason. And that's fine. I'm willing to accept that.
But I, didn't, didn't Fred just, and I was, I was looking for the.
That was the second problem with it. That the, the, not only did, was a missing groundwater one, it wasn't the right site plan of special permit review. We spent a very long time talking about this. I'm surprised, um, um, none of what I'm saying should be a surprise to anybody.
Absolutely is a surprise. I've always said it's a site plan review. But maybe we're not, are you trying to impose the special permit standards on the use?
No, I'm not even talking about criteria. I'm just talking about what's listed on your application.
Uh, and I can, I can show you the application, right? So there's, there's no box for site plan special permit on the application form. It's site plan approval, special permit, common driveway special permit, wireless communications facility, special permit, wireless facility site plan review and special permit groundwater protection. So I checked the second, the.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Usually Bob will write in this field of what things are required and it has always been.
I'm saying we may not have a disagreement if, if you're just saying that the special permit groundwater standards apply.
I'm not sure we do have a disagreement. I just wanna make sure that we're just applying the same thing to everybody.
If you're saying, if you're saying the use is by special permit, I don't agree.
I'm not saying the use is by special.
Okay.
I'm just saying that if there's been a different application, we've been calling this one thing for you, but we call it something else for everybody else. It just doesn't seem right that we're doing that. And if there is a reason, I just need clarification on what that is and that's fine. I just don't understand why it's different for two different people.
Carrie, can I ask a good question? Are you going to ask legal counsel what the difference is between zero Bartlet Street and this applicant? I guess I'm confused what your question.
Well, I just wanna know, why did we have another applicant go back and refile?
You're gonna name the applicant to legal counsel. So you're gonna say legal counsel, why does zero Bartlet Street differ from this applicant?
Yeah, or any other one that we've done with a, with a groundwater, site plan approval groundwater. They have all followed that logic, so.
So I'm going down the questions that were asking the attorney. I think it was good questions that Millie brought out with the duration of time, on how long the plant is in operation. And then someone else talked about the hours of operation. And so then the next question for legal counsel, I'm just trying to get a sense of when legal counsel comes back to us at the next meeting. What are we looking for from legal counsel? You're gonna ask him to, you're gonna ask legal counsel to look at this versus Bartlet Street and how the, why were the two handled differently?
Um, sure, we can ask that.
Well, I, that's why I guess the question is to Kathy to, is that your question for, for Kathy?
Yes, so I have a couple of questions related to this memo. So the first question was related to, um, just application in general. What, what is the proper, what should be there consistent with how we have operated with other applications? In which it is usually, we add something very different. So I just want clarification. If it's different, why? The other thing I have is, um, for the temporary concrete plant. If we're doing, if we are considering acting on the groundwater protection overlay district special permit as part of the concrete plant, how does, I, I'm not clear on how that works. Um, you know, just in terms of placing conditions, how do we actually review it properly? Now I see that he said that we can evaluate it in the same manner we'd consider other construction facilities. Um, it'd be reasonable to think, seek input or guidance from other sources such as DEP. Um, you know, what is the right pathway to do that? And then, you know, if we were to want, if we wanted to look at associated construction impacts in comparing the impacts resulting from concrete delivery and installation, not furnished through the use of an onsite plant, what's the right approach to, what's the right pathway to do that? So I just wanna make sure if we are to place conditions and we are to review, what is the right manner in which we conduct that review so that it's a fair process and makes sense to us placing conditions?
So, so if I could, um, the, this entire conversation has just filled up a page for me. Um, and so what, what I would like, or what I would ask the board is if you could just um, recap and, and vote on what questions you wanna send to town council. And then Carrie, if you, because it, you know, the, the it seems that the, the questions are, are coming from you, so you, you know your questions better than I do. If you could just write, send me those questions in writing tomorrow.
Okay, so is there a motion to send these questions that we just discussed to town council?
I just have one thing. Um, I, I don't think I have a question on hours of operation. I think he made it clear in the memo that that we can set hours of operation for the concrete plant. So unless someone else is confused, I don't think we have to ask them that again. Don't you agree Kathy? He said you can set hours of operation for the concrete plant.
Right, he, well, he talks about that the hours of construction would be limited to those in the zoning bylaw.
Then he said you can.
Seven AM to seven PM, um, except Sunday and legal holidays. And he said the board, um, and then the board could consider other limitations of time um, as necessary or appropriate for the use and the operation of the concrete batching plant.
So I'm not saying we take off Saturdays, but, um, for example, the way I'm reading that is he said, these are the hours in your bylaw, but you could set a condition for the concrete plant where you can set hours of operation. So could we do Monday through Friday, seven to seven? And I'm not saying that's what I'm doing. I'm just using that as an example. And if it's, if it's not how you read it, then maybe we do have to ask him. The way I read it is hours of operation could be an added condition that you could ask if you wanted to.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, he's, he's, he's restating what the council for the applicant said is that the, is that the hours of construction would be limited to those in the zoning bylaw, seven to seven.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, um, so, uh, so that, so that's, you know, I mean, he's, he's, he's basically restating, you know, what attorney Meadows, Meadows say, said. And then, um, and then he goes on to say that you could put conditions. I don't read it, Amy, that you could do other times, like you want to expand those times?
Well, no, I'm just wondering if he says we can put conditions. I guess I do have a question from, what would be the conditions that he's talking about?
Well, it, it does go on to say you can pose, um, safeguard and limitations on time or use.
Right.
So, I, I mean.
What does he mean by that? If, if we're, if he's saying in one sentence, you have to follow the construction hours in the bylaw, but in the next sentence is, he says, you can condition time and use.
Because it's a special permit under the groundwater.
Right, those don't seem to go hand in hand.
Right.
So you're, so you're asking whether or not you could do something.
Well, what conditions is he talking about time and use if it's not time? You, you were just saying he stated the time, so that's what we have to do. And then he says, well, we could condition time.
You can impose different conditions based on the special permit. You know, if, if there wasn't a special permit, you would be, um, following the bylaws of seven A to seven P. But because it comes under a special permit, you can impose some conditions. Um, because it is that special situation.
Right, that's the way I read it too. But I guess maybe we should verify it if that's not the way you're reading it Kathy.
No, I'm reading it the same way as you, Amy, and Millie. It goes on to say, you know, at the top of page four, special permits may be granted with such reasonable conditions. Safeguards or limitations. I mean, that's right out of this, you know, the bylaw.
Yeah. I mean, to attorney Meadows's point, he wants to get in and out of here as quickly as possible. But, you know, the residents may not appreciate a seven A to seven P on a Saturday. But we don't really know what the, the concrete plant will generate at this point, whether it's noise nuisance or dust or anything like that. So I think based on knowing more, we, we may or may not have to. But ideally, we wanna do, we do wanna make it shorter.
Millie, Michelle referenced a que, a, a question that you had, something about, um, something about the concrete plant.
I think it was Kathy, it was a duration, so Millie was saying, you know, what does the applicant think typically? The timeframe it would take, so is it?
So that's, so that's not necessarily something you're asking town council.
I, I guess Millie was asking, or if I'm right, Millie, I don't wanna put words, but you're asking, can you, can you put a duration of time and then if, if it's longer, the applicant would then come back and ask for an extension? Is that what you're asking, Millie?
Yeah, I, I mean, I.
But are you asking that of town council or are you just talking?
Yeah, because you can put some conditions or you can put, can we say not to exceed a certain amount of time? Or during.
To me, I think maybe he has to come because say we write memos back and forth and we're wasting time.
Yeah.
You know, gonna say he comes back with a message that doesn't even make sense with the question that someone's asking. And then we have to write another memo. It seems like just have him here and then he can answer the questions. It's like we're playing roundabout with memos back and forth. Where if he was just here at the meeting, then if he didn't answer the question that someone was trying to ask, then we could say, no, that's not what I was asking. I was asking this. Seems like we're just going in circles.
But, but I think you should at least, you know, give him the courtesy of asking him questions in advance of the meeting. You, you know, it, it sounds like, again, what we talked about at the very beginning was that you're probably gonna continue this to April twentieth and I'm going to, you know, um, ask him if he's available, um, for the twentieth to attend your meeting. But, you know, to at least give him these follow-up questions in advance, I think is, you know, is, is appropriate.
I agree.
I just hope he comes because I, I, I think we need to get to the bottom of it.
All right, well, we'll start with the questions and if it's still not, if it's not clear, then we'll see if he can can join us to clarify a little more. So it sounds like we have questions about condition of time to the extent that can be conditioned. Um, the other question, Millie, did you have a second one to that or that was related to time?
That was it.
Okay.
I can't, I can't, I mean, if, if these, I came up with two regarding the concrete plant. Is can the hours of operation be different than what is in the zoning bylaw, which is seven to seven? And then can the planning board put a time limit on how long this construction plant can be up and operating?
Okay, so the duration question.
And then what, whatever your question was, Carrie.
Um, yeah, so if this is now, if, if we're to put conditions and this is part of the special permit review, what is the format for how that works? Like how do, what is the best path to evaluate and place these conditions? Um, is the concrete plant part of, it sounds to me like he's saying it's part of special permit approval. Um, so I just wanna clarify what he means by that and what the correct path is for that. What's the, that's right, what's the correct pathway?
It, part of this special permit approval because it's under the groundwater special permit?
Right, that's what he's saying on page two. And that's just what I want clarification on.
Yep.
The only special permit.
Yeah, the groundwater special. I know, I know it's not your use. I do. We agree on that.
I had to say it, sorry.
All right, so that would be for, I think that would be for that. Okay. Okay, and then other than that, we have, um, I think that's it for this one. I don't think we have any other information to review. Any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, it's a public hearing. Um, that's right, I'm, I'm sorry. Mike, you've been kicked out again, I'm sorry. Mike, you're, you should be back in.
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, uh, through the chair. Uh, I just wanna offer that, um, the concrete plant will not be running twelve hours a day, five, six days a week. It, it, it's, um, I'm not gonna be able to tell you how often it is, but it, it's, it's not something that's running continuously. So if you have this picture in your mind that, that this thing goes up and from the time it goes up until the time construction stops, this thing is constantly running. It's not, it's a batch type thing like anything else when you need concrete. They'll run it, they'll produce the concrete and then they'll, they'll be pouring. So it won't be every day, every hour of the day. Um, and, and then again, just, um, in terms of, in terms of, uh, the length of time that it will be, um, constructed on site. Um, the company that is producing and pouring the concrete is incentivized to move this in and move it out as quickly as possible because if they take longer at our site, they're not making money going to another site. So they are more incentivized than any of us here to get this plant up, use it and get it out of there as quickly as possible. And this is something that, because. And this is something that, because it's going to be in the middle of the parking lot, it's something that we're going to want offsite as quickly as possible too. So I don't want anybody thinking that this thing is going to be something that's going, going to go up and stay up. We don't want it there any longer than anybody else does, if not more so, because, um, it's right in the middle of our parking lot. So um, just wanted to offer that if that helps, um, I'm not sure, but anyway, that's it.
No, thanks for clarifying that. I think that I just recall the neighbors were really concerned about that being something on site for 12 to 18 months. And nobody wants it on there for a long time. You don't want it there. The concrete operator doesn't. So it's not like anybody's going into this with intending for this to be there for long. But you know, how do we best mitigate that to whatever extent we can is, is probably what we're trying to get down to.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Mike, you're part of the team. You don't have to keep going back out. But you just keep getting kicked off by mistake?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, okay. Um, are there other public comments at this time? Okay, I don't see another hands. All right. So why don't we, we have, oh, Kathy, so you want to vote. So is there a motion to submit those questions to town council?
I make the motion to submit, uh, the stairs-related questions to town council.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Anthony?
Hi.
Millie?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Carrie's an eye. So we have that. Kathy, you're going to regroup on the, um, just making sure we're all squared up on the, the radiation piece. And obviously, the peer reviewers have the traffic and groundwater piece.
Hmm, yep.
Okay. Um, and then I think that's everything. Unless there are any further, any board member comments? Uh-uh, applicant comments, anything? So do you think we can reasonably target April 20th to come back? Is that what the peer reviewer thought?
Uh, yes, when, yeah, when we had originally, um, well, we, we've talked quite frequently, but yes.
Okay. And what, um, what do we have on, on the April 20th on the agenda?
Um, right now you have, well, again, I'm assuming, you know, you'll continue the, um, uh, that you'll continue the, you know, zoning hearing. And then you have, um, I have your draft agenda here. We'll be adding, um, the, the next hearing, which actually should not be, you know, any great length, will be the, um, 399 Hudson Street. And then you also continued the, uh, One Lyman Street and the, uh, Common Driveway on West Street. So you'll have, what you'll end up with is, is five continued hearings that evening. One Lyman, 95 West, 425 Whitney, 399 Hudson, and then the zoning. I'm assuming you're going to do the brunt of the zoning tonight.
Um, okay, question on 399. They are continuing our hearing to meet with, um, ground. When do they meet with groundwater?
They meet with groundwater on the 13th of April.
Do, do we know if 399 is still, will they still be able to meet with the ZBA?
Yeah, they meet, the ZBA is meeting on the 14th, April 14th.
So that's still on.
Yeah. And then they would meet with you on the 20th. And again, it, it, you know, I don't want to prevent anyone from speaking at a public hearing, but I mean, it should literally be a five-minute public hearing.
Yep.
I mean, all they've done is change, just so everyone is aware of this, if, if you haven't seen from the, the information that was sent to you, but all, I, I don't want to say all they've done because I mean, it was significant for design review, but they've changed to, uh, the outside of the units. Um, and then the, the whole scale, the whole scale of the roof has been reduced.
Okay.
And that's all, so that's, that's it.
All right. That seems pretty quick. Is the board okay with, um, I think we will do bulk of the zoning. I think the 399 will be quick. So that'll be three hearings. Is the board, how does the board feel about that for the 20th, this 20th? I think I keep saying the 16th by mistake, but it's the 20th, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Does that work for everybody?
I'm assuming.
Does that work for the applicant, the 20th to come back? Okay. So we say, um, six o'clock? Is that when we're starting?
Yes.
So do we want to say, um, a motion to continue for 6:00 PM on April 20th?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Anthony?
Hi.
Millie?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Carrie's an eye. Okay, great. So the hearing for 525 Whitney Street, Special Permit Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for Groundwater Protection Overlay District will be continued to April 20th at 6:00 PM. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
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 Good night.
Next on our agenda, we have
Thank you.
Bye. Next we have on our agenda, the public hearing for 399 Hudson Street, Special Permit and Site Plan Approval. This is the one we just discussed as requiring a continuance. We received a letter today from the applicant that asked if we could continue to April 20th in order to allow for them to meet with the groundwater committee to review the petition on April 13th. And that request was submitted by engineering design consultants by Peter Bemis to the board. Is there, are there any comments on that? Or I think we learned a little bit about that just a minute ago. Anything else to note on that? Nope. Okay. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing for 399 Hudson Street, Special Permit and Site Plan Approval to April 20th at 6:00 PM?
So much.
So much.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Anthony?
Hi.
Millie?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Carrie's an eye. Okay, that's great. Next, we have the public hearing to consider proposed zoning amendments for 2021's annual town meeting. And for that, I just need to shift gears for a second. Okay, um, for this one, I just need to quickly read the public hearing notice. So for this, uh, in according with MGL Chapter 48, Section 5, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 6, 2021, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of seeking public opinion on proposed amendments to the following sections of the Northborough Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 7. Complete text of the proposed amendments is available on the Planning Department webpage at www.town.northborough.mass.us or by contacting the Planning Department at 508-393-5019. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 20A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather among place, this meeting of the Northborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation. Um, you can find instructions on how to participate in the public comment portions of this meeting by referring to the agenda that was posted on the town meeting, on the town website for the April 6 meeting, 2021. Um, the, additionally, you can see the, each section that's listed for the bylaws that we review this evening that are contained on the agenda as well. So with that said, I will move on to the bylaws that we will review this evening. So what we'll do for each one, now Kathy, I saw your note that we also need to decide who's addressing what. And maybe we can do that at the end after we get a chance because we'll probably hem and haw about that a little bit. Um, but what we can do is we can go through each article. Maybe talk just a little bit about, just to give people a brief overview of the intent of the bylaw or what, the reason why we're bringing it forward. And then for each one, maybe open up to comments so that way the people have an opportunity to address, um, each one as we go along. So why don't we start with Article 29? And why don't, why don't, you know what I'll do too, is I'll bring that up so everybody can see it as well. Okay. Okay, can everybody see this?
Hmm.
All right, great. And I'll put this up here too, for the purpose of the public being able to view it as well, in case they don't have it at home, or if they're on the call and they wanted to comment. Now, this is one that was actually submitted by the zoning enforcement officer. Kathy, did you want to speak to this one at all? This, this was something that came from him.
Sure, um, actually, just, just very briefly, Carrie, um, this, this actually came from, um, town council.
Oh, thank you.
There, there was, um, there, there's been some issues in the past with how the court has looked at, um, how we have assessed these penalties. So it was determined that, um, the language needed to be altered slightly, which is obviously what you see here underlined. Um, so that there, there's now, I, I, I believe before it was, it just was a straight $300 and it wasn't clear, um, whether it was for, you know, o- only the first time and, and that was it. Or, or, you know, could it be, uh, you know, successive days every time the violation existed? So what's being added here is that the, the first violation that the, um, building inspector, who is also the zoning enforcement officer, so when he finds the, notifies the applicant or the property owner of, of the first violation, um, it, there's an actual ticket that's written and that would be for $50, second violation, 100, third violation, and everything after the third violation, you know, if it's still not remedied, um, would be $300. Um, and then I'm not sure, you know, exactly the, the fine tuning, but obviously the word, um, after fines, the words and penalties, um, had to be, um, added.
Okay. Um, and for, just for the benefit of anybody following along, as Kathy alluded to, things that are added are actually underlined. So that's how you can see what the changes are. And then things that are removed would be crossed out. I don't, obviously, I'm not finding a good example, but I think you get the idea. When you're trying to figure out what's been added or removed, that's the logic to that.
So my, my assumption, Carrie, and, and again, it's, it's an assumption I made, is that um, the building inspector would, would do a brief presentation on this. Um, you know, but it needs a, and again, you can discuss this at the end of the meeting or at the end of the hearing. But, um, you know, uh, it would be a, um, you know, planning board member that would need to read the motion.
Okay. Okay. Any additional comments by board members before I open it up to the public to make comments?
No.
Nope.
Okay, now, this happens to me when I try to share, then I can't see who my participants are. Let's see, there we go. Okay, is there anyone in the public? Oh, hold on a second. I have, um, Flor Micali. I'm going to bring you in to talk. Okay, I think you're on. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Lisa Micali, 13 Maple Street. I'm just looking at the actual words. And it says that, um, the second line, with any applicable provision of this bylaw should be fined is some not to exceed $300 for each such violation. But that, doesn't that go against the line that says 300 for subsequent third and subsequent violations? How come that's written that way?
No, I believe what that means is that, is that you, you know, af- after the, after the third violation, it, it doesn't increase more than $300 per violation. So it, it'll be $300 a day. But it, it, it doesn't change though that it was 300 on the third day, then, you know, in increments of either like, you know, 350 or 400 for the fourth day. You know, 450, 500 for the fifth day. So the, the, the max per day is 300.
Oh, okay. Does, could it actually say that by saying per day? It just, when it says it's not to exceed, that pretty much states that you can't get any more than 300 for the violation.
I see. So it's, so how would you make the distinction that each time you get some, each time is a violation? So like if I had, say the violation was, I don't know, what would be a good violation? I, I have a tractor in my front yard or something. And Bob, Bob gets sending me a $50 violation. Is that the tractor, the violation, or is each day that I leave it, the violation?
Each day you leave it is the violation. You're in violation of the bylaw by, by having the tractor in the front yard.
That's even, I don't even know that.
No, I know, I know. I, I can't think of it of, of one off the top of my head either, but. Um, so, so the, so the first time he comes out and says, you know, Carrie, you need to move that. It's in violation of the zoning bylaw. And, and you know, you don't, and gives you, you know, oh, you know, seven business days or something. I, I, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly what the process is, but you know, say he gives you, you know, seven business days to move it and you don't. And then he says, you know, if you don't move it, I'm going to start, you know, you know, enforcing this bylaw. So the first day is 50, $50. You know, then you don't move it. He can write you a ticket the second day for $100. Then he can, you know, if you still don't move it, he can write you a ticket for the third day for $300. You still don't move it on the fourth day, he can write you another ticket for $300. So, you know, the, the individual ticket never, it doesn't exceed 300, but it starts at 50.
Yeah, the second to the last sentence there, it says that each day that the violation is permitted, it's a separate offense. So just basically get a new offense every day that you are, are doing that.
Yep.
And so then would you, then would you say 300 for each such violation daily or per day?
It.
I, 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 I don't, I, I wasn't involved in this and this is what town council wrote. Um, so.
Oh, but I do see what Anthony's saying. Then e- each, each day is, is a, constitutes a separate offense. So I think that what is what may help, what you're getting at, Lisa, which sounds like you'd be stuck at 300 and that's the max.
Right.
That may actually sound, that sounds like it covers it.
Yeah.
The separate offense.
Okay.
It's a good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. And then penalties, don't you have to list what penalties are as well? We know what the fines are, but what do we know what the penalties are?
Well, this, this is only one portion of the bylaw, so other parts of the bylaw may explain that. I don't know.
Okay. Oh, you mean the original?
Yeah, so something like a penalty might be actually a closure or something. Or a restriction in services offered, so.
I mean, you can, you know, again, this is a public hearing, you know, you can ask, I, I mean, I can, you know, ask Bob, you know, these questions, you know, tomorrow. Um, perhaps he can attend the next meeting, um, if, you know, if he's available to answer your questions about this.
Yeah, okay. We may need him if we come up with a couple throughout the, well, maybe we'll just flag that as something to make sure we're covered there properly. Okay. Did you have any other questions about this, Lisa?
No, no, I'm just, as I say, I, you know, I'm a legal vigo when it comes to the words and it just, um, I just want to make sure that we don't get a surprise at the end of the, end of the day.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. That's a good comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, um, any, based on here, I don't see any other comments for this one. Based on just hearing from, um, any public comments, does this still, does this make sense to board members? Or do we just want to make sure we're still covered properly?
Yeah, it's pretty clear, I think.
Makes sense to me.
So I think what the question was just, so fines and penalties paid, maybe it's something we can just go back and look at what do, maybe Kathy, just separately, Bob could even clarified in email where we should reference the penalties, all fines and penalties.
Yep.
So these are the fines, but what are the penalties? Okay. And then do we need to vote on each one as well?
Not, well, I mean, if you wanted to close out your public hearing tonight, you know, you would, you would close your hearing and then vote on them. But again, I'm anticipating.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just past practice, you know, you'd keep it open. Uh, you don't have to. I mean, you, you know, if you're all set with this tonight, you can close it tonight.
Okay.
But you wouldn't need to vote until you close.
Got it. Okay, so why don't we go back? Why don't we then move on to 30? So Amy, this is something that you had brought forward.
Yep. And I actually had a couple of changes because we did receive an email from Scott Rogers. And then today we received one from Ashley. So I might pull up mine so I can go through. Let's see.
So before we So before we even get to edits, can we, do you want to just take a minute to talk about the purpose of this bylaw in general and just explain it a little bit for anybody watching or participating in the public hearing?
Sure. I'm just going to call it up for a second. I have so many. Okay, so with Article 30, I had been going through, because I was part of the master plan, I was also reading the master plan and the community development plan, and the community development plan had called for prohibiting use variances. But instead of doing that, because there were some people that weren't in favor of that, I thought maybe a different way to do it after looking at other towns was just to go through and prohibit it, some uses that were, that could be offensive to neighbors and not beneficial to the town. Some of our industrial areas border neighborhoods. And I did find in other towns that they have these listed, the prohibited uses. So I actually took this from a couple of other towns to see what they considered offensive. And then we talked about what we should add or delete. And we deleted a whole group that we weren't sure about, that it were, would be offensive to our town and we just left some of them. So this was a list we came up with. In the first paragraph, the G prohibited Uses, Ashley's memo, she added a comma and she took out or and added another comma. So I added that in. I didn't find any problems with making those changes. I don't know if anybody else wants to read it and see if it makes sense to have the commas there. Instead of noise or vibration, it was noise or vibration. And then as I went down, we did get an email from Scott Rogers questioning a couple of them. So he questioned commercial slaughtering, if it could include, I don't have his memo up, but it had to do with insects and something else. So what I did was I looked up commercial slaughtering and the definition included livestock and animals used in the preparation of meat products. So I thought if the board wasn't adverse to it, just to make commercial slaughtering more specific, we could use commercial slaughtering of animals used in the preparation of meat products. Or we could just leave it as is. It was up to the board. I think you all got a copy of Scott's email also. And he can probably talk to it too after.
Amy, can I just go back to the, the first one where the, the way that this is grouped, and I don't remember what town, you know, you, you took this from?
Framingham and Midway, yeah.
Okay, but you know, starting in the second line of four, you know, it talks about, you know, you've got particular, particulate matter, comma, noise, or vibrate, no, it's, it's noise or vibration. So that's, that's a clause, noise or vibration. And then you have the next clause, or through fire, or explosive hazard. And then you've got the next clause, or glare, are expressly, expressly prohibited. So, so you, you really shouldn't be breaking up fire and explosive hazard, you know?
Okay, this, those are comments from Ashley that she had emailed today. And, and I don't know if she's on. We can ask her to come to the next meeting. And she thought it made sense to be noise, comma, vibration, but we could ask her to speak to it?
Well, I don't, I mean, it's nothing I'm going to, I don't think any of you need to spend a lot of time on it. I'm just saying how, how this, how, how this is worded, it, it was correct how Framingham did it. It, because they're little groups. It, noise or vibration is, is a little group. So it's noise.
Okay.
Vibration, or through fire or explosive hazard.
Okay, we can leave it the way it was. I just.
I'm not, I'm not a grammar expert, you know, and maybe Ashley is, but like I said, I mean, it's, you know, we've spent more time on it than need be right now. But I just wanted to let everyone know how that's, you know, how that was worded from the original bylaw.
Okay, so it should stay as is to make sense.
Yeah.
For zoning. Okay, I just, I was trying to incorporate, you know, I try, I always try to look to what residents asked and I was trying to show them in the memo, but we can go back to the way it was.
So I have a question, the original question regarding commercial slaughtering. And I'm not opposed to clarifying it, that's okay. But I didn't fully understand it. It was, would a biotech facility on Barefoot Road pursuing insect protein for sustainable food products be considered commercial slaughtering? It didn't seem like something like that would just, it seemed a little different. Although I don't mind clarifying it, I just didn't fully understand what they're doing over there, I guess. What, if that's considered slaughtering, I don't know. Maybe it's beauties in the eye, slaughtering's in the eye of the beholder, I suppose. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I don't think it falls under slaughtering in the sense of physical destruction of meat product, but I can see where that was going. Yeah.
So as a board, you think we should just leave it? Or even ask Bob, leave it as commercial slaughtering?
I like it with a little bit more detail, I think.
Oh, so you like?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that answers that question for anybody who might have, have posted, for sure.
Yeah.
So do you think of animals used in the preparation of meat products? I only got that because I did look up commercial slaughtering, which led me to livestock, which led me to that sentence.
Yeah, I think that's fine with me.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on that. Or if you want to go through all of them, maybe, then we can, we don't have to.
Sure. Another one, and I don't have his memo up, so I guess you do, Carrie, so you can speak to it. But fertilizer or manufacturer of fat rendering. And he mentioned that fat rendering is used in soap manufacturing. And so I'm not opposed to taking that out. I think fertilizer manufacturer is the more offensive to the neighborhoods than fat rendering. And maybe it was something they used to do in large quantities in the olden days. And maybe it had a certain smell. Did you ever know what it was, Kathy? You would said it, these were from a while ago. Do you know why fat rendering and manufacturer of tallow grease and oils would be?
I mean, it, it sounds pretty ancient to me.
Right. So I think crossing that out and just leaving fertilizer manufacturer, because I think that actually has a smell with it and it's explosive. And then I think he had a question about manufacturing and storage of corrosive poisonous or malodorus acids. And I asked Kathy and Bob, but I don't know if they've had a chance to, to see if we had any of those in town. I don't think we would.
No, I had just sent that to, to Bob, I think it was yesterday or today, Amy, I forgot when you sent.
I think it was yesterday.
Yeah, so I had just sent it to him and, and I, I did not see, I mean, just due to my schedule, I did not see Bob at all today.
Right. So we could always come back to that on the 20th. But off the top of your head, and off the top of my head, I can't think of a company that we have that manufactures those type of materials. So then.
Amy, one, one note on that, and I think if you just scroll up for a second.
Sure.
I, I think using, you may have mentioned this in your, your reply, that by including and, it really makes it that both instances are required, not just manufacturing it, but storing it. So if you were just storing, you know, your run-of-the-mill chemicals for cleaning, that's not really the same thing. This would be if you're actually manufacturing and storing it.
Yes, because in our bylaws, and is inclusive and or isn't. So if there's manufacturing and storing, you're doing both. Good point, and yeah. So then, I'm not going to read down all of them. If anybody in the audience has a question.
Sure.
On any of them. He had a question on raising and breeding of fur-bearing animals. And as a board, we had talked about fur-bearing animals before too. So I did look up the fur-bearing animals and what this was in before, because there are some countries that ban raising of animals for their pelts and furs and, but the United States doesn't. So some towns prohibit it in their town. And they can call it fur farming. I don't know if that makes sense, Kathy. I guess Bob will go through these two. But fur farming is the raising and breeding of fur-bearing animals for their fur. Just so there is no confusion, confusion with raising and breeding of fur-bearing animals. I don't know, Kathy, off the top of your head, if that makes sense? I guess Bob can check these out.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing, it's nothing that I'm familiar with, but, you know, if you could just send me, this to me, Amy, tomorrow.
Yeah, I think I did. I sent it, it was a part of the Scott memo. I just broke it down here, so when I brought it up tonight for everybody in the public, it wouldn't be so confusing.
I think it looked like his concern was that a dog breeder would be classified as a prohibited use. And I think we actually ran into this when we did kennels last year. We stopped on that fur-bearing animals definition, or we, we asked about it. And I think what you added here sort of clarifies that it wouldn't prevent dog breeders or whatever else has fur that you'd want to breed.
Right. And then there was a question about yard for storage and sale of used building and junk materials and talk of salvage materials. So when I looked into this deeper, we actually have a definition of a junkyard or automobile graveyard in our bylaws today. So these are prohibited because it's actually in our bylaw, but it's not in the use table. So with that, I thought, since we already have a definition, instead of using yard for storage and sale of used building and junk materials, we can just use our definition, which is junkyard or automobile graveyard. And this is what the definition is. I would not add the definition to the bylaw. Here, it's already in our bylaw, but I just put it there so the public could see it, if you wanted to. So that was my change for M, to swap out that one line for junkyard or automobile graveyard. And I see automobiles spelt wrong. What is, what does the board think of that for a change? And I guess we could talk about it later, but would that make sense, instead of yard for storage and sale of used building and junk materials, to use the sentence that we already have a definition for?
So this definition, this is already prohibited, is it junkyard or automobile?
It's already in our bylaw definitions. And since it's not in the use table, we've always been told that if it's not permitted, it's prohibited. So it's already prohibited.
I think that makes sense. And I think that's better. I think that's a good edit, actually. I like them. I like that.
And the definition fits what we're trying to get at here.
Yeah.
Any other comments from board members before I open up to the public on the, Amy, if you could just scroll up a little bit? Or self-storage facility, you just noted they were already prohibited, so this is just kind of a cleanup item?
Right, it is already prohibited in our bylaws, so it's just adding it to this list because it puts it all together in the same place.
Okay. Any, any comments from board members on these clarifications?
No, makes sense to me.
Okay, okay, I have a couple of hands up. Scott, I'm going to start with you first. Hi, Scott.
Hi, thank you, Carrie. So Scott Rogers, 26 Tomahawk Drive. And I, I feel like I need to start with an apology. I didn't intend for you to then go through the kind of contrived and silly scenarios that I gave as examples. Really, the, the question was if, for some of these areas, if there's activities that might technically be these uses, would, would it be worthwhile to add some sort of scale to, to indicate where something was, you know, below the threshold of being a hazard or a nuisance? And so I, I gave those quite contrived examples as just a, you know, if you were reading something literally, then, you know, is, is insect protein harvesting, commercial slaughtering? But, so that wasn't my intent, so.
Oh, did you just make that up? I thought that was, I thought that was a real thing. Did you make that up?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So all of my, you know, and we can talk about bacon soap and all that. But, so my, my intent wasn't to, to have you make changes. It was more along the line, is there, is there some uses that would be allowed at such small scale that they weren't hazardous? Or they weren't, you know, obnoxious? So that was really the point there. I think, and, and going through some of these, there might be some changes you want to adjust on these. But that, that was really my intent, is, is whether putting some sort of scale on this so that if somebody had a really innovative idea that they weren't prohibited and, and had no even recourse to then talk about a special permit to allow that to happen because these would be prohibited completely.
Okay, now, to some extent, Bob would still have, you know, with a scale, I don't know if that would preclude Bob from actually being able to make his own calls when he looks at these things. Like he may, for example, say in the instance of, say there were insect proteins, whatever, you know, would Bob categorize that differently than slaughtering anyway? So I don't know if there's a level of interpretation that would impact, you know, what.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I assume there would be. And that's where I was unclear on, you know, what, what flexibility is there in interpretation when we, when we got phrases like, you know, expressly prohibited in all zoning districts? So that was really my question, is how does this, does this bylaw change you, really, does it, does it really restrict what kind of interpretations the zoning enforcement officer can make? Does it, does it still give some flexibility for, I thought my, my best example was the reclaimed Barnwood, I thought. But, but anyway, you know, does it give him the flexibility to allow it and allow some fun stuff to happen? Or does it really tie his hands? And if there was a great opportunity for a business, that we would have to reject them?
Okay. Okay, so I'll let other board members talk too. But just in my estimation, this is a list of things that we've agreed upon, saying it's not just this board, but if we were to go to town meeting and vote, that we've agreed we don't want, that we don't think any of these ideas are, you know, if there's a cool idea, we don't think any of these ideas would fall into that category. So what I think what we would have to do as a community is decide, is this the list of things that we majority agrees we don't want in town? And maybe that's up for discussion or debate. But I, I, I don't see a lot of wiggle room. I don't know if other board members feel, view that differently, or if I'm even explaining that properly.
Right, and I think the hard thing with impact, we had a discussion with town council. I wanted to add a footnote with non-conforming to impact and, and, you know, whether it was 20% or, but he didn't recommend that.
Yeah.
So when I look at this, like if you said, you know, 20% can be corrosive poisonous, I don't know. I don't know if it would be too. I look at all these and, and I, I think of like SA Farms and that was supposed to be a slaughterhouse. And I think that would be just as bad for the neighbors who hear all the, they hear cows crying now and the smells. So I can't see any percentage of a commercial slaughtering house that, next to a neighborhood that would be accepted, or even the poisonous and chemicals, like just in the news, was it Wilmington where that chemical company and all those kids got cancer? Like, I just look at these and I think if there's something cool, it might, like you said, Carrie, I don't think it's going to fall under any of these.
Any other comments?
These are very, sorry.
All right, good.
Yeah, I think these are very specific definitions. I, I mean, I, sure, there's probably somewhere in the world or something could happen that could fall into this, but I can't imagine, I mean, of all things. Of all things that this list is going to stop somebody from doing something cool in town. I'd be shocked.
Yeah, I, I mean, stopping somebody from doing something cool in town, but also. The question can become, like I look at the concrete batch plant and say, we, you know, have something coming before us. That wants to put a temporary one up. So would this be unacceptable under? Would that be unacceptable under these conditions? Even putting a temporary one up?
I had asked when town council went through these. And, and I've got a, a, a comment to about this overall, but. I had specifically asked about a couple of examples and one being the concrete batch plant. And the, the way the town council. Views this is that, you know, again, what's being proposed on Whitney Street? Is, is a temporary structure that's being used as part of the. You know, it's necessary for the construction of the facility. And it's not a permanent structure, whereas this, in, in this use. You know, this lends itself to that this is a, a permanent concrete plant, just like an asphalt plant. I mean, not the same, but I mean, it would be, you know, that someone wanted to come in and that was their primary use. You know, on Whitney Street, it's definitely temporary, being proposed to be temporary. You know, to be used just in the construction of the facility. And, and it's really, you know, you could almost look at it as that it's an accessory to the use.
So it wouldn't, would it make any sense to put that word permanent in that definition?
No, because I mean, then you'd put it in everything. You know, a permanent fertilizer manufacturer, a permanent, you know, petroleum refinery.
Well, I was thinking all permanent uses that pose a present or. I was thinking more up, up in the main body of the.
The, when, when you. You know, I mean, I mean, it's, it's inferred that these, that these would be permanent, Millie.
Okay.
That, that, you know, that this is the actual use that someone wants to put on that, on their property.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the overall, Amy, if you're, are you, I don't want to cut you off. So the, and this, this might be something, you know, I mean, I, I do think it's, it's for next year. But, you know, when I was, you know, going through each one of the articles. And taking a look at, you know, where we had placed it, where, what it was, was it replacing something? Or was it in addition to? In this particular section, under use regulations. You know, G, this is being proposed to be added as G four. And in the existing bylaw, there is a G two that talks about. It, it doesn't list. Specific uses, but it talks about, it, it says in all zoning districts, no use shall be permitted. Which would be offensive because of injurious or. I lost my place. Or noxious noise, vibration, smoke, gas, fumes, odors. There, there's like four sentences, you know, other objectionable features hazardous to the town due to fire or explosions. So it, it, it's, it's this, it's different wording than what's G four says. But at some point, you know, if, if G four passes at town meeting. We need to go back and clean up. We probably make it part of G two. Because you've got, because G two in the first paragraph of G four basically say the same thing.
Okay, so you're saying take out this and make the four or two?
You, 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 yeah, you could. I mean, if, if, if you're. You know, if you're. Yeah, if you're okay with the, you know, the existing wording.
I mean, it's just different wording though, is the only thing. I don't know.
So that's why I'm saying you could, you could just go forward with this at town meeting this year. And then, you know, let's, you know, assuming that this passes. Next year, we come back and we do a good old housekeeping, you know, where we just, where we clean it up. Where, where we end up combining G two and G four.
I don't know. I'm wondering if we should just do it now. I'm just comparing them, you know, we can, but we can read it and we're not closing it out till the twentieth. So maybe as a board, everybody go home and look at G two and the warning for G four. And. And we can come to a agreement. I mean, I, I think it would be confusing if you have both of those in there.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it's not so much confusing, but it's redundant. You know, so again, you can, you could fix it now or.
I think we should fix it now. I hate to go back. You know, next year, bring it back again. I'd rather just do it while we're doing it. I don't know if people want to do it now or you want to move forward and then come back to this. On the twentieth, everybody look at it and see what words you want to keep in and. Which sentence, maybe we pick either two or four and the four becomes a two.
Yeah, I mean, I can just reword it for you if you want. Just send it out as an example. Not so much as an example, but what, you know.
Try more, a combination of the two. Yep, that would be good. It, it's up to everybody else. What do you think?
Sure, that works.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, Scott, did that help to answer your questions a little bit? Or did you get to say what you wanted to say?
Yeah, just, just two more items. For the last item about self-storage, you say that's covered in our current. Because it's not listed in the use table. So it's implied that it's prohibited already.
Well, we have a definition for self-storage facility. Because it was allowed at one point. And then in two thousand and nine, they just took it out of the use table but left the definition there. So because like junkyard or automobile graveyard is the same thing, there's a definition in our bylaws. But there is no use listed in the use table, which means it's prohibited. That's the way we had done it in the past.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that we, we, it's implied prohibited use. Then finally, on the whole G two versus G four. I, I really like the idea of modifying G two. By adding the, in addition to following uses and then the list of uses. I think that's much cleaner. And that's gonna save you a cleanup step later, later on.
Great, good feedback. Thank you for that.
While we're here, actually, while Scott's on the line, I'm wondering with A, you know, I did have this sentence. Should we just say commercial slaughtering of animals? I mean, do we need used in the preparation of meat products or? I guess that's a question for Bob. Like, is it too much? Maybe it just has to say commercial slaughtering of animals. It doesn't matter what they're used for.
Yeah, because we don't know what's going on in certain places.
Yeah, I think that if you end it there, that's totally fine.
Yeah, that's just one thing I was thinking, but it makes it clearer, but it doesn't have to be too detailed. So I'll just take that out.
Okay, thanks, Scott. I have another hand up, Fran. I'm gonna bring you in. Okay, hi Fran.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment on.
Oh, Fran, could you just please say your address if you don't mind?
Sorry, Fran Backstrand, seventy-six Cedar Hill Road. Oh, no worries. So on number M, letter M, I just want to say that I agree with Amy's change. I didn't realize she was making a change. I didn't scroll down far enough when I raised my hand. I do, I do question though, if you, if used building and junk materials was left in there, just a comment that. There's such an art of repurposing used building materials. And I think of the Purple Rose where they have like doors and windows that are fabulous and expensive. And I would hate to think that they would not be able to store and sell those as used building materials. And so I think salvage does make more sense. If that's, what we're really trying to do is not have junkyards. That I would just ask that we think about the, the word used building materials because again, it's. That's not what they're doing and I don't think that's the intent of what the original M was.
Yeah, so Amy, is your edit here to actually replace yard for storage and sale with?
So it'd be. I would just take that out.
Does that answer your concern, Fran, about, because I think Scott actually made a similar point about the. Materials that people like to use, the old barn materials and stuff like that.
Oh, absolutely, yes. And then just one other quick question. I just want to confirm that. You're accepting written comments during the open, public hearing, not just ones in the audience?
Yeah, yeah. Did you send something? If you did, I missed.
No, just if I don't feel like I can stay up for the entire meeting.
Yep, feel free to send them.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all.
Okay, I don't have any other hands raised. Any other board comments on, just sorry, if you.
I'm sorry. Does everybody agree with the junkyard or automobile graveyard just replacing that sentence?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's a good edit. I think these are all great edits. I don't know if anyone feels differently. Maybe just scroll up a little bit.
And the fur farming, that was another one.
Yep. Any other board comments on this one?
No.
Okay, great.
Okay, for thirty-one was contractors yard. Okay. This, I actually just wanted, the contractors yard originally. Definition is what's crossed out here. And it was considered a lumberyard, construction, contractors yard or open air establishment. For the storage, distribution or sale at wholesale or resale, but not including salvage materials. Merchandise, products or equipment, fabrication of sub-assemblies or parking of wheeled equipment. So what I did here was I updated it to say yards, including administrative offices. Because before it was only a yard, but a lot of the contractors now have offices. So. This was yards, including administrative offices and structures. Used by a builder, contractor, subcontractor, landscaper, tradesman. Or similar business dedicated to the storage of their vehicles, equipment, machinery, tools, materials and fabrications. So it's using, it's adding in more. Uses because there are a lot of landscapers looking for places and tradesmen. So I added that in. I took out sale. Because we had two other definitions that had talked about sales and wholesale. And then what's not underlined is what the original definition was. I took out disturbing dust because who decides what dust is disturbing or not? And then. All storage and parking of trucks, equipment and dumpsters shall be screened from view from the street in the budding properties. By fences or plantings in perpetuity. That's something that design review always talks about, like, and Michelle can speak to it, but I, because I reached out to her. But when they talk about doing their plantings and fences. They always talk about in perpetuity. So it's easier to add it as part of the definition than have to keep adding it as a condition. And another. Thing, the only reason why I added storage of salvage materials is prohibited because. This is, but not including salvage materials. So I only included it at the bottom because it didn't make sense anywhere else in the definition. But I know Scott spoke about why salvage materials. And I, Fran just said it's cool. And I think Ashley even talked about salvage materials. So. I'm not, you know, married to storage of salvage materials is prohibited. I just actually put it down there because in the original definition, it says, but not including salvage materials. So that's why I added it to the bottom. But if the board thinks we shouldn't have it there. Or maybe we can add salvage, all storage, outside storage, parking of trucks, equipment, dumpsters, salvage materials. Shall be screened from view. I could add it in up there. So it's allowed, but it's screened from view. I guess just input from the public and input from the board about what you think.
Any board comments to start?
I like actually the idea of having the salvage materials allowed. Partly for the reason that there is, there is a, a, a nice market for it. So I think screened from view. Would be a better option than just prohibiting, prohibiting it.
I'm gonna put in here, but just as an example, and then people can.
Okay.
You know, like, just put salvage materials here.
I mean, what, oh, sorry, go ahead. It's probably not equipment. I was just gonna say, is that part of equipment? But that doesn't make sense as equipment.
And then. Then I just take that out. I mean, it was added, so I'll just take it out. If, if that's what people, yeah, want to see, don't want to see.
Any thoughts on that?
Could I make a comment, Amy? I don't agree with taking out the word disturbing. Because I think it was intended, and maybe Kathy can check with Bob on this, but. I think it's intended for the premise of disturbing, not only dust, but disturbing dust, disturbing noise, odors. I think that word disturbing is intended for all those three elements. And so are you saying any dust, any noise, any odor? I think disturbing is, should be in there.
I guess we could ask Bob. Originally, we had like. Pretty fences or attractive fences. And I know that was taken out because beauty's in the eye of the beholder. So I thought. Actually disturbing dust too, but it's so subjective. Who says that dust is disturbing and that dust isn't? But. But I think I agree, if you want, if Kathy wants to run it by Bob. I don't mind leaving it in or taking it out. I'm open to anything.
Well, I, I think I understand your point, Michelle, that the disturbing dust, noise and odors all go together. But confined on the premises, I think, is an important part of that too. Because you can have it be disturbing dust, noise or odors, but if it's confined to the premises. As long as it's that, does that? Change it at all?
We just want Bob's feedback on that.
Sure.
I mean, I think when we discussed these, wasn't he part of the discussion that were. I mean, did you just recently take the word disturbing?
No, it's been out the whole, it's been out since the beginning.
Okay.
Well, not the beginning, but the latest iteration. I didn't change anything since we agreed on them.
Yeah, so I also wanted to talk to the board in general about plantings in perpetuity. You want it either, if this, not this year, but probably next year. That should be consistent throughout the entire thing because you asked for plantings in commercial. You know, you ask a lot of landscape design throughout. So you should be, you know, we talked before about being consistent throughout. You're only asking this for a contractor's yard. It should probably be within your bylaw.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Yep.
That if you're using landscape as a form of buffer, whether it's a fence or, or a planting. Natural vegetation, that it should be in perpetuity.
Okay, I guess Bob would have to find out where that would go. That would probably go under site design, the seven oh nine.
Yeah, so. Then Bob says, then put the fence back up. You know, if a tree dies, then plant a new one. Right? So, because that's just screening, is you're screening in the form of a fence or in plantings.
It's a good point. But you're not suggesting take it out of here. You're suggesting in a future scenario.
I'm just suggesting to, you know, to be, you can keep it in here if you want it for this. I mean, it makes sense. But what I'm saying is, this is only for a contractor's yard. You have, design review goes through. Commercial and industrial. So there are many other uses that will come forward other than a contractor's yard.
Yep. I agree, but I think it's, it was too late to go back and put it everywhere. I think Bob has to look into where to add that.
Well, maybe Kathy, as we start to go through, this has gotten a, a to-do list for next year.
I wanted to add dark sky compliant in too, in the bylaws for next year. If you have that on your list, because it seems like the peer reviewer and. Even conservation, everybody asked for. uh, even conservation, everybody asks for dark sky compliant, so under lighting, maybe that should be added in the bylaw too.
Okay, so on this one, any other board comments? It looks like we're just checking in with Bob on disturbing. Okay. Um, any comments from the audience? Let's see. One in here. I have, um, Michael Creamer. Hi, Michael, if you could just state your, um, name and address.
Hi, my name is Michael Creamer. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Great. So Michael Creamer from One Buck Hill Road here in Northborough. I just had a question with the, uh, the contractors yard statement there at the end that you added, you know, "all outside storage trucks uh, shall be screened from view," et cetera, et cetera, right? Is that, if that passes, does that then become retroactive to all existing contractors yards or only moving forward as different modifications are made? Could you help me understand that a little bit better?
Zone, zoning only, um, goes forward, Mike, in Massachusetts. So anytime a bylaw is changed, anybody that's, that's existing automatically becomes pre-existing.
Gotcha. Okay.
So it, so it does, it, it's for anyone that comes after this bylaw is adopted.
But then if a new permit or whatever would, would become before the board, that would- you're right?
Well, a- again, that goes, it's, it's not easy just to answer that question simply, because that's when you have to look at, is what's, um, is what's theirs, um, um, the same as the pre-existing non-conforming use?
Right.
Um, or is it something different? And if it's something different, then, you know, it's not, you know, that determination has to be made, and then uh, i- if it's considered to be something different, you know, uh, it loses its grandfathering, s- so to speak. But terminology that we don't use anymore, but, and I just did, but pre-existing non-conforming is, is what, what we use.
Okay.
Okay, does that answer your question, Michael?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, we have also Scott Rogers. I'm gonna bring you back in. Scott, if you don't mind, just say your name and address again.
Yeah, thank you. So Scott Rogers, twenty-six Tomahawk Drive. So I was just looking for then clarity on the sales aspect. I know you all had, you know, discussions on prohibiting sales, allowing sales. If there were sales, would it, then the business fall under a definition? So I just wasn't sure where you all fell on that, and if, if you accounted for, you know, anyone that did want to perform sales, would they be appropriately categorized under a different use?
Well, one reason why I did it is because years ago, we had Judy Barrett, a planning consultant in town, and when I talked to her, she had mentioned that definition shouldn't, you shouldn't have a use that could fall under two definitions. And we do have a definition for wholesale and retail sales. And I would think a contractors yard, like, every property has one main principal use. You come to the board and say, "I wanna be a slaughter, commercial slaughtering, or I wanna be this, or I wanna do this on my property." And for some reason, this definition has more than one use. But we do have definitions for, for wholesales, retail sales, and I would assume with Bob, if you were contractors yard and you wanted to sell mulch on the side, that would be an accessory use. Your principal use would be a contractors yard, and your accessory use would be selling something, but when I went through, I was gonna go through all three hundred and fifty-one towns and see what they did for contractors yard, and I got like twenty in, and it was a lot of work, because they're all different places in the bylaws. But I, I did look at our surrounding towns, and none of the other towns included sales. Um, I don't know if this was from a long time ago, but I do remember with Judy Barrett saying, you know, every property has one principal use, and then you add accessory uses, or you can have special permits for others, like there was, uh, DeWolf, he was a auto, he did towing, and then he came back in front of the zoning board to ask to do used car sales, and he also came back and asked to do, um, auto repair. It wasn't just, he did, it wasn't, there wasn't a definition that allows for auto repairs, towing, car sales. So this was the only one that had lumberyard and retail and wholesales, and we already have definitions for that. So I was just trying to clear it up and clean it up.
Yeah, so thanks. So a question then, if you were a landscaper and had been classified as a contractors yard, what would be the process that they would go through to be able to sell mulch on the side?
Well, I tried to go through that. I asked my friends. I have a lot of friends who are landscapers, and they buy their mulch and deliver it to a site. They don't sell mulch on their properties. They're landscapers who do a service, but they're not, they don't have the retailer, the wholesale of people coming and buying mulch, like, I don't know, Michelle, if you can think of any, but the words I asked.
You don't have to think of an example. I guess my, my question was, if someone wanted to ask for an accessory use, what's the process for asking for an accessory use or getting granted a permit for accessory use?
Um, they go in front of Bob, but Kathy can speak better to that.
You know, if I could recommend, um, Scott, um, that's a good point, because Amy is bringing up a conversation that you had with Judy Barrett, and we are in conversations with Judy Barrett right now about design review standards, and I'm wondering if Kathy can just maybe reach out to Judy, if you think that's possible, Kathy, for clarification?
Um, I, I mean, the, 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 the references that, that Amy is talking about with the, um, you know, community, um, you know, with our community development plan, I mean, that's from two thousand and nine, and the work was done in, you know, two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight. So I honestly don't know if that's really fair to go back to a consultant, you know, for, you know, ten plus years as to whether or not they remember the conversation in Northborough. Um, but I think that, um, you know, certainly talking to our building inspector, who is the one that has to enforce this, you know, is a good start.
So what, I'm sorry, so I missed the answer then. What is the process to, if you wanted to apply for an accessory use? Can you, is that, that's possible to do through Bob?
Well, um, the, I mean, we, we have a section in the bylaw about accessory uses. Um, I don't, um, the-
I have a definition right here.
We, we talk about, um, you know, non-residential accessory uses. Um, any use permitted as a principal use shall also be permitted as an accessory use. So, you know, the, if, if you're prohibiting it as a, as a principal use, you can't do it as an accessory use.
Well, no, because it's still covered under other definitions, like Amy's just saying, say you're a wholesale, you wanna do trade, you know, sales, it's a still a use in the bylaws, you would just, that would be your accessory use. Is that what you're saying, Amy?
Right, right. Like, we have a contractors yard, but we have retail sales, we have wholesales, we have greenhouses, and those are all other uses that are allowed in our bylaws. And the definition says, "any use permitted as a principal use shall also be permitted as an accessory use, provided such use is incidental to the main or principal bui- building." So like, DeWolf, like I said before, was a tow company, and then he applied to do um, used auto sales, and he went to the ZBA, and they said, "okay, but it can only be five cars." You know, it was an accessory use. And, um, the discussion I had with Judy was actually during the ba- the duplex, it was, we have a definition for townhouse, and we have a definition for multifamily, and there were some uses that could fall under either or, and she said we should fix it, so you only have one use per definition, so she didn't think you should have a use, like, you shouldn't be able to say, "I'm a wholesaler," or "I'm a contractor," or "I'm both," like, every, usually, most of the properties, you have one principal use, your daycare, your retail sales, your contractors yard, you know. And then if you wanna do something on the side, you add an accessory use.
Okay, so do we need to, um, so thanks, Scott. Did you have any additional questions on this one?
I guess just that unanswered bit, is that, what is the process for getting approved for an accessory use?
Okay, and so Kathy, we don't have a, an, an answer for what's the process?
But that wouldn't necessarily change this, this, uh, zoning, proposed zoning bylaw change.
Well, again, I, I think it's, it's worth it, and, and I'll, I'm gonna proceed with it, is to, you know, ask the building inspector, because again, in our, in our use table, we have non-residential accessory uses, and then in, um, in a, in a different section of the bylaw, you know, we talk about accessory uses. So I just want to make sure, uh, you know, um, I, I, and Amy knows this, I, I disagree with her understanding of the conversation with Judy Barrett about duplexes and townhouses, so I just don't want this to get I don't know, convoluted, or, or, you know, so, so I just, just gonna make sure, I'm just gonna go through the bylaw, and I'm gonna talk to Bob, and, um, and, you know, I'll, I'll report back with information at your next meeting. Just where, how this would come to be, could someone apply for it as an accessory use? Um, if they, you know, were not allowed to have a contractors, I mean, if they had a contractors yard, could they sell it? Could they do sales as an accessory use?
Okay.
When, when you are specifically, you know, not allowing, um, wholesale or resale, retail sales.
I don't say we're specifically not allowing it, it's just like any other bylaw.
Well, you're taking it out of the, but, it's allowed now, and you're taking out of the bylaw, so that means it's a prohibited, you know, it, it doesn't exist in the definition, so therefore-
Contractors yard, but it'll, it's, oh, it is, does, um, it's permitted in our bylaws. And can you, I, I'd like to think of an example of, I don't know if, Michelle, if you know of any landscaper that actually sells product, like, landscapers I know are really busy out doing their jobs, like, I guess you could hire people and have them do sales too, but I can't think of any landscaper.
There's a couple example, I mean, uh, there's a person I go to in Shrewsbury. You know, they do landscaping, but they also have mulch, gravel, sand, dirt, you know, that, that I can go there and, you know, fill up my, you know, a back of a pickup truck, or I can have them deliver it, or I can have them come and, you know, do the landscaping at my house.
Now, I wonder what they're, under their bylaws, because Shrewsbury doesn't allow sales for their contractors yards. Because that was one of the ones I looked up. So I don't know what they would be classified as.
Okay, so it sounds like for this one, the question we're just looking for is, um, could you come back? I thought we did ask this before. I wonder if we just never got a chance to get the answer, but just, could, could just the sales component be an accessory use, and specifically that example you just gave? Um, okay, thank you, Scott.
And just for clarification, I don't think we're honing in specifically on landscapers. Remember, we talked about electricians, plumbers, builders.
Yeah, I was just using it as an example.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of those people may have a little extension into their products where they would sell products, so there's just, that's why we don't wanna like box into very specific just in the, um, you know, their application of just their trade, but what if they want to allow to sell something?
Yep, that's a great point. Okay, um, I have another question, Marshall Gould. I'm gonna bring you in to talk. If you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address.
Sure. Marshall Gould, forty-one West Street.
Hello.
Um, having been on a planning board, we always used to say to ourselves, "what's the purpose of changing a bylaw?" I'm not objecting to most of the words, but I think it's a mistake to take out or sale at wholesale or retail of materials, and I know you've been talking about landscapers, but specifically, you've got a place in town, Bigelow's, you've got right next door where it used to be, where they sell mulch, and those could both be deemed contractors yards, and they could both sell things that are applicable, certainly Bigelow's sells their product, but they can also deliver it to a home, and, and they have people who can install their landscaping. Concerning other businesses, no of some necessarily in this town, but I represent, for example, a cabinet maker that has a contractors yard. They do quite a bit of uh, building cabinetry and assembling cabinetry, and then on the same property, they have their, uh, little showroom where they sell it. But if you're saying that, well, they can always go and apply for an accessory use, you have to understand, many of these businesses become one business. It's not like you can say, "well, they're primarily this," but they also do this. As businesses are started up, or some businesses that may already be here, they may do both. And the cabinet maker that I'm thinking of, um, they've always done this, so if they were to say, "well, which one is your primary and what's your accessory?" I don't know that they would be able to tell you, because both are very important, and they wouldn't survive one without the other. So I guess I say, I hear you saying, Amy, that, that Judy Barrett once said, "if, if it's defined or listed somewhere, you shouldn't have it in two places, but you're specifically talking about contractors yards, and I think there are contractors yards, both in this town and in other towns, where they do sell either at wholesale or retail materials, so I don't see the point of taking it out."
Okay. Amy, do you wanna clarify the original intent to Marshall's original comment?
Yeah, like, actually, I have a question of the cabinet maker, is he, where is he zoned? Because I guess the concern is, if it's wide open, then you start out as a cabinet maker, and then all of a sudden, you're doing a service of sales, which is great, but now, all of a sudden, according to our definition, you go from retail sales to a contractors yard, and now you sell your business, and you are a pretty cabinet maker, salesperson in downtown, that becomes a yard full of trucks and heavy equipment, and I read our community development plan going way back when, and, and the whole purpose was to make sure the downtown areas and the main street areas were shops and pedestrian-friendly. And the way I look at it is with non-conforming is, if, if you are a contractors yard, you're a contractors yard, like, and, and I did look in other towns, so I don't know, I couldn't find any that included wholesale and retail, so I'm not sure. And there is, I don't wanna talk about it, but there are, are applications coming forward where contractors, and they say they're a shop, a showroom. And now we're saying, "okay, if you're coming to our town, and you're saying, 'I'm going to be a contractor's showroom,'" but yet, we have a definition of a contractors yard that allows sales five or ten years down the road, now we're gonna say, "you know what? Now we're not a showroom, now I'm a contractors yard, because I'm a contractor." And, and then they could sell to someone else, and now it becomes a yard with heavy equipment. I guess, the, when I talk to people, there's a huge difference between a cabinet salesperson with two vans that goes out and does installations and sells their cabinets, and a contractor yard that is heavy machinery coming and going, and has more of the offensive noises, and might leak fluids into groundwater, like, to me, those are two very separate, distinct things, and I don't feel one is worse than the other, I don't think one's better than the other, I think everyone has a right, and I think they're all great businesses. But I know from being on the planning board for seven years and working with the master plan, and reading the community development plans, there's a huge difference between someone who's parking wheeled equipment, and this, and someone who makes cabinets and goes out and installs them. Like, those are two very different uses. And when you talked about Bigelow's, we have a bylaws, we have a commercial greenhouse, a greenhouse sales room or stand for the propagation, storage, or sale of nursery or garden products to be sold at retail, so in my interpretation, I mean, Bigelow's would be a greenhouse and sales. In my interpretation, I mean, Bigelow's would be a greenhouse and sales. We also have sale of grain, lumber, construction, and garden supplies, like, we have a lot of different definitions.
Okay, so I want to make sure, um Marshall, did you get to speak what you say about that?
I just want to say one more thing.
Sure.
I'm I'm not talking about businesses that are already here. To be examples for the enforcement of this bylaw, because they are preexisting.
Right?
But suppose somebody comes into town, is looking to put a business. And they go and they meet with our zoning enforcement officer, and Bob says, describe your business. Well, what you're saying is that they have to say that they are either a contractor's yard. Without wholesale or retail sales, or they have to say that they are a commercial. Sales operation that has many of the things that a contractor's yard would use. If I I think Bob can determine whether what they're looking to do. Can be done in the zone where they are looking to do it. I just think that if there is a contractor's yard, there are many contractors. Who may want to sell some of the products that they make, and I I'm asking, why are you limiting? The sale at wholesale or retail of products that they may make there?
I guess when I real, I did delve deeply into this. And I couldn't find any other town that had whole or resale of material contractor yard in definition. And I went to the dictionary where I went to the mass builders. And I went to dictionaries to find definitions. And let me pull mine up, and when Bob can't find it in the mass building code or whatever, you look it up online. And the contractor yard online was contractor yards, a service establishment primarily engaged in general contracting. Or subcontracting in the building construction trades. These include administrative work offices, workshops, indoor and outdoor storage of tools, equipment, materials, and vehicles. I went to Clinton and Ashland premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor for storage of equipment, supplies, fabrication. And parking of wheeled equipments, like, I looked far and wide and spent days. And I couldn't find another bylaw where a contractor yard is this is a wholesale yard. And when I'm talking to people like that do planning, they're like, there's one primary use per property. So I guess I didn't know why Northborough had a definition where. It can be this, that, or the other thing, and I'm not trying to be. You know, I'm just trying to make it easier for interpretation. I just, I haven't found the definition of contractor yard with sales.
So, maybe because, I just want, so maybe because this needs further um investigation by the planning board. Um, maybe we should hold off in submitting it this year and work on it for next year.
Well, why don't we start a little slower and just find out from Bob, like, if the problem, and it seems, you know, to be a concern of. How do you let somebody who just wants, if you, you know, there's two extremes, we have the. The yard, and then we have someone like a cabinet maker or electrician or something like that. How do we, is there a pathway for them that that so that it doesn't exclude the people we don't mean to exclude it? Maybe that's as simple as getting an answer from Bob on, how would you handle the sale component without? Taking away from what we're trying to do with the contractor's yard, does that sound like something we can at least start with?
And if you even look at this contractor's yard definition, our old definition only talked about a yard or open air establishment. It didn't even include offices, structures, buildings for for sales, like, it was an open air yard. So even right now, by saying contractors' yards are in warehouses or in buildings, doesn't really fit our old definition. I was actually trying to open up our definition to include administrative offices and structures. So they can put their materials inside or their, you know, so in the past, people who said. I own a retail sales shop and I'm a contractor yard. It really shouldn't have been interpreted that way, because it was an open air establishment, so anyone selling something inside of a building. Is probably considered retail sales right now.
Well, the the existing definition, though, had four, so so you could. You could be a lumberyard, you could be a construction yard, I mean, and, you know, and.
Or other open establishment, it doesn't talk about any inside sales.
Amy, I think your change has some very good points to it, I'm not criticizing the whole thing by any means. I'm just saying, if a contractor, and I I may not be thinking of all the potential possibilities. But I'm saying, why would you, let's say somebody comes in, and I could understand. Why if somebody's gonna come into Main Street, Northborough, in a business zone. Where they could certainly do retail sales, but they're not gonna do a contractor's yard. But if somebody buys a piece of property or rents a piece of property in an industrial area. And if they can do both, why would you want to exclude it?
I guess my concern is in the downtown, because you mentioned you. You you mentioned you had a cabinet salesperson, does that person in downtown?
Not a salesperson, it's it's a cabinet maker and a cabinet distributor. If he can't make it, he can get it from other people, no, he's in a different town entirely, he's in South Worcester County. And he he happens to be on Route one twenty-two as you're heading down to Northbridge and Uxbridge. Um, and I honestly don't know the zone that he's in. He's in a building where previously somebody else was there, and this fellow was originally. In a large old factory where he rented out space, and the factory burned down. Through no fault of his, and he ended up finding a subtle location, but I'm. We're not saying, who's here now, who are we gonna hurt for a new bylaw? We're saying if somebody wants to come in, I understand what you're saying, if there, if. If somebody's gonna say, well, we really need to do sales, then, you know, okay. They have to go in a commercial area, but if they want to make their own product and sell their own product. And if it's in a zone where, let's say, the the tougher zone to find. To be able to build a product allows contractors' yards is in real, why could they not also? Do sale at wholesale or retail without saying, well, it's an accessory part, my primary part is the contractor's yard. Sometimes you can't say, one is the primary and the other is accessory. So I'm saying, what's the purpose of preventing somebody like that from doing so in a proper zone?
Yeah, I guess my purpose is the opposite, is if you have someone in a proper zone doing retail of materials. And now because our retail of materials falls under a contractor's yard, now all of a sudden, I am downtown and I'm selling cabinets. And and not only my retail of materials, but three years down the road, you know what, I'm also a contractor's yard. Which is allowed in industrial, but but our definition says retail of materials, so. Now, maybe I'm grandfathered in, because I am a contractor retailing materials, which now. In a grandfathered use or nonconforming use, makes me a tractor's yard in the downtown, which wasn't allowed, but it's grandfathered. Because I was allowed to do it.
I guess my point is, this is where the zoning enforcement officer would say to somebody. If you're going to build or make whatever product you're going to sell. Uh, and if it's going to look like and significantly be a contractor's yard, but with sales. Then you have to go to one area that allows contractors' yards, and the fact that they may have some sales. At wholesale or retail doesn't automatically mean that both operations can go in a commercial zone. That's up to the rest of your zoning, but I think here you're restricting it somewhat backwards. Um, I I just don't see the point of taking it out, but I I've said my piece.
No, that's great feedback, thank you, um I I thank you for 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 bringing that up, I'm gonna move you back and then. Let's see, for the for the board, I want to make sure we get to cover the rest of these, so I think it sounds like. Number one, we are checking on disturbing, but also, you know, maybe we just need to find out. The sales component, well, first of all, any board thoughts, any hearing some additional feedback? It sounds like this sale piece is something we did, we may need to just. Get some input for Bob, like, what is the pathway for people, if so that we're not preventing businesses, but we're also not, you know. To the original point of making it so you can't be grandfathered into it, just because sales is included there, which Amy sounds like what you're trying to prevent.
Right, because we have a lot of people who are really great downtown and they're selling their kitchen places and they're selling kitchen supplies. But but now because they might have a van and do service as a contractor, now. Are they grandfathered as a contractor's yard, you know, even though that's not a zone where contractor's yard is allowed. But they go to sell their property and they say, because I was a contractor, even though I was retail to sales, I'm a contractor, so now. I'm gonna sell it to this other person who wants to store backhoes all up and down, and I don't know, and it's. It's not that I'm against it, I'm just trying to follow the community development plans, the master plans. I take it so seriously, because we spend so much time doing these plans.
Amy, I could not even follow one thing that you just said. Are you are you concerned that somebody on Main Street is gonna sell their business and put backhoes there and pretend to be a contractor's yard?
Well, even once when we met, I think Fred said. Well, no, Fred said it once, then.
Here, okay?
I said, there's a kitchen guy downtown, and I would consider that a contractor yard. So now, when they go to sell, they can do anything that's under the contractor yard, which would be.
I think that's extreme, Amy, but let's.
All right, well, I'm just trying to make it.
Okay, let's.
I think that's why it's one principal use per parcel, because then it's not so. Extreme, and and if you find a definition in another zone, then have a contractor yard with sales, I'd love to see it. Like, I'm not trying to be extreme.
Should hold off on this until next year.
But we've been talking about it all this year, so.
Well, as the first step, why don't we at least find out from Bob, because I I mean, I don't think the intent of the board is to. To prevent a business from conducting business, but also making sure we protect, you know. Any areas that this may be an issue, so it to and to best identify how to balance that, why don't we? Check in and just find out from Bob, what is the path, if you're a contractor's yard, what is the pathway to add sales? If it's not, I don't know if it gets into the primary use argument or not, but how how would somebody go about that? Or or is there an instance where, um I I actually, I don't think we found an instance where. I'm trying to think, when we looked at things, I think we decided Bigelow was the greenhouse, so I guess. We don't have to get into that component, but just to find out this the sale, the retail or sale part, and this disturbing dust.
I got it.
Okay, okay, any other board comments on this one?
Oops.
That was it, okay.
I go to the next one?
Sure. Okay, so this one is the accessory dwelling, is that what you have there?
Yep.
Okay, great, okay, for this bylaw, this we actually, we originally talked about changing the size. For the accessory dwelling unit, we talked about the merits of providing an opportunity for, whether it was for um. A senior housing opportunity or a double disability oppo- opportunity. To make it so that if somebody were to have an accessory dwelling unit, it would be big enough to accommodate a caretaker. Um, what what we learned as part of our discussion is that currently in our bylaws, we do, we allow for seven hundred square feet. And Bob and Kathy had reported back that um we, it really hadn't been a problem, there was only one variance. Requested in the recent history to for a bigger piece, and the the variance was granted, so. It didn't seem to be a problem at this point, it's something that maybe we can think about going forward. Um, as a possible bylaw in the future, but for now, what we at least wanted to do was open up accessory dwelling units. In the R A and R B district, there were previously special permits. So this one's pretty straightforward in terms of allowing that um by as a byright use in what's called in R B. Any board comments on that? Okay, any public comments on that? Okay, then we'll move on to the next one.
I can talk to these again, this is um, I was, for the next two articles, I was referring back to the community development plan again. Um, it called for creating a commercial corridor along Main Street. And in in the community development plan, there were recommendations to prohibit storage or warehousing facilities, freight terminals. And uses that require numerous trucks or heavy machinery along Main Street, it listed business east, business west. Downtown business, and these are ones that I've brought up in the past, because I am trying to read all the plans and make sure that. You know, we're following what the consultants recommended in these plans, so um I went through it last year, but we tabled it for this year. There were two of them, wholesale trade and commercial storage facilities. And if you look at the definition, business for sale of commodities and quantities to retailers. For resale or further processing, including associated warehouse or outdoor storage and distribution facilities. So really, I started with the commercial um storage facility, but then then this wholesale trade too. Because it had the warehouse and distribution facilities, that was my main point. Of keeping them in industrial and taking them out of business west, because. We've had, you know, a lot of concern about warehouses and distribution facilities. Um, I don't know what everybody thinks, it's for both of them, both wholesale and commercial storage facility. And that's also is warehouse and distribution. I would, I wanted to start, I wish we could switch thirty-three and thirty-four, because I started with commercial storage facility. And Kathy and Bob did look into it, we don't have any right now, so there wouldn't be any grandfathered. Commercial storage facilities, and um they didn't have a problem with it. So maybe I will start with it and then just go back to the other one, because this is quicker.
Yep.
So I don't know, we've talked about this one before, and like I said, we don't have any. I don't know if any board members have any concerns. I think we talked about it in depth already.
Okay, any, no comments? Any public comments?
Yeah, I, and I just wanted to point out, just in case people haven't figured it out this particular year, but. The the order of these articles is just how they move through the zoning bylaw. So so in the zoning bylaw, any wholesale trade is first.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to talk about this one first, because I know we already talked about it a lot and it's easier.
You know, so that, I mean.
And then I'll go back to wholesale trade.
Yeah, that that's just the reason for the order, it just follows the flow of the bylaw this particular year.
Yeah.
Okay, great, Scott, did you have a comment, just state your name and address again?
Yeah, Scott Rogers, twenty-six Tom Hawk Drive, I guess it's a just an informational question to start with, so when. A use is determined for a property, is that recorded alongside then that property owner? So we know that, you know, such and such properties' primary use is this or that?
In old decisions, I find sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't.
Do you mean recorded at the registry of deeds, Scott, or?
Or 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 some way that we track that that allowed you to say, oh, we don't have currently any commercial storage facilities in business west?
Um, no, um, there is not, there there's not one source that you can go to. Um, a a lot of times, it's 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 based on um people's, you know, collective memories about what, you know, what used to be in a site. Um, a lot of times, wh- um, when a company, um, particularly a company, when, you know, when they're. Purchasing a commercial or an industrial property, um, through the title chain, you know, they'll be able to see what. What, who was in there before them, um, so that. Um, so that that's one way that someone can determine what the use was, you know, previously. Um, you know, today, uh uh it's not required, but a lot of people um. Do the zoning interpretation form with the building inspector, um, you know, and that becomes part of the record, the in-house record here at the town hall. So there's a variety of ways, there's just, there's not one specific way. And then how things are categorized in the zoning bylaw use table can be. Different, not not incorrect, but it but it but it's can be different as to how the assessors. Categorize something because they're using, you know, a whole, you know, different um language and. And and set of criteria that they use and and in different state statutes.
Does that answer your question, Scott?
Yeah, it does, and I think it it exposes a gap, right, in that we make a change to a use table. And we can't determine the impact that that would have to existing businesses in this case. That would turn them into non-conforming. So we don't have a good way to assess these changes. And then, you know, I'm hearing we we even use different language. Between assessor's office and then, you know, a a zoning use might be different than a tax assessment, so. That's unfortunate that we can't, you know, kind of look forward and and. Determine what what the impacts would be, so it's, there's no way for, let's say, a business owner. To understand that, you know, um, a use. Um, uh allowance got, you know, ripped out from under him, um. There's no like notification, there's no, there's no tracking, so it's, I mean, it's nothing we can do for this year's town meeting. But establishing some method to keep track of. You know, what uses are in play at each property, I think that would be a very important. Um, uh index to have, I'm I'm really surprised we don't have it, that's that really surprised me and I'm, you know, I'm new to. New to this bit, but I would think that if we'd made a determination of use, that's that's recorded and maintained somewhere.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea, it could be a good business idea for somebody out there.
You know what, if we did that too, we can add in. Every application on groundwater also has reports that have to be annually submitted, so those could be added in and. It can be checked off and get your annual annual reports. But I I we've talked about stuff like that and there, it's probably more of a selectmen thing, there just isn't the staff time to do. The indexing is told or the report checking. But Kathy and Bob did look through commercial storage facilities and went through business west, which is the only place where this is taking effect. And they said there weren't any there right now.
Alright, thanks, Scott.
Okay, I find what's tricky too is like, how Kathy said, you know, the assessor is different than what. The person has on the property, but different building inspectors to. Interpret things differently, like there are a lot of different factors that it's not a perfect. It's not perfect in any town.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but that's commercial storage facility, if anyone else has any questions.
Okay, any any other questions on this one? Alright.
Wholesale trade, I pulled out for the same. Purpose because it talks about warehouse and distribution facilities. And that's not really something that the community development plan called for on the commercial corridor. And um. So I just, you know, it's along the same thing as commercial storage and we did talk about it as a board and. I think Michelle used the e- example of the one up by BJ's Gas. Would be wholesale trade. And um I did send a quick email to Kathy and Bob to see if. They knew of any others that would be considered wholesale trade, but I know Bob just got the email, so maybe on the twentieth. If he can think of any others that this would affect.
Amy, which one i- in that email that or that question, which one do you mean up by BJ's? Who who do you mean?
Um, I think we had talked about, but maybe you weren't here that night, um, in front of the second phase of. Um, North Pole Crossing, there's a person that sells rocks and mulch and. I don't know there considered, but I think we talked about it one night and I think maybe Michelle, you thought that was. Wholesale trade or would it be a contractor's yard? I don't know, maybe I'm confused.
Well, you you can hire, I mean, I I know, I I know of that business and I I wasn't here the night you were talking about that, but. Just in particular, that that particular individual, like you, you can hire him to. Uh again, you know, put your pool in, put your landscaping in, do a front walk.
Oh, so is he a contractor yard then? What would he be?
I I I I don't know, he's been there forever, so I don't, I don't know that anyone's ever asked the question, but.
Actually called the hardscape business.
Yeah, and he, I mean, so you and you can go and buy product from him too.
Right.
Yeah, okay, well, I guess it would be interesting to see where he would fall in our. In our zone, in our tables.
So he's a contractor that builds patios or. Um, anything that that hardscapes with all the stonework that he has out there, walkways, things like that. He sells.
Industrial zone, so I mean, it's allowed use, but.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah, definitely is, I'm just wondering. Do we have any wholesale trades? I guess that would be my question.
He sells it and he installs it.
Yep. What, do we have any wholesale trade in business west? Or business south that would be affected by this? And business south, I definitely don't think we do, that's where the mosquito project is Walmart. Um, there's some warehouses, I I can't picture any commodities there. But but it was in the um. An email I sent, I know we looked into the commercial storage. And we talked about the wholesale trade, but I don't know if we put our finger on. Anybody in town that we could think of that was doing wholesale trade.
I don't think so.
So that's why I think it would be a big deal to take it out of business west as to follow the community development plan that. That was recommended prohibiting a storage or warehousing facilities, freight terminals, trucks and heavy machinery. I think there are some things in our bylaws that we we probably don't have anymore. Just like those prohibited uses, the ones with the asphalt plants.
Thinking behind making it a planning board in industrial for wholesale.
Um, planning board does all the industries, but we can leave it open, if you want to leave it as permitted, I'm not even against that either. I just. I and if that's something, I'll change it tonight, I just. I don't mind.
Did you have a thought there, Millie, that made you give you pause to that or?
No, I just don't think that it's something that we shouldn't be allowing there.
Yeah, it's by special permit, but we can allow it by right, you know.
Well, alright, go ahead.
If the rest of the board did agrees.
Yeah, I I was thinking about that as well, I just, I think it should be used by right in industrial.
And again, maybe even highway business, I'm not sure how that. Would negatively impact us by allowing that? And not make consideration with the the community development, I don't think that is. Contradictory to that.
No, we can allow it there, it's just not a high intensity use, like I know, like, I would think on Route nine, they like the. Lexus dealers or a hotel or something that brings in high revenue. I don't know if like a yard with outdoor storage would be a high revenue use. That the town would recommend on highway business, but.
But it just depends, like wholesale trade could be like they, I think it's the old Shakor building, which was. For hair products and supplies cosmetic. That that.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not a adverse to taking it off either.
Yeah.
Hi. But that's on that, I I'm not, I think that's fine as well.
Alright, I'm taking off, I didn't hear from everybody.
I know that.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Michelle, you're, are you okay with that as well? Michelle, did we lose you?
No, you, I'm still here, ask a question again.
Were you okay, we, um, Amy just changed that from permits to get to allowed by right and highway business and industrial.
I agree with that, I was just wondering in business west, um, is and and Amy, were you asking? Are there any wholesale places in business west?
Yeah, I was, I asked, um, I sent it to Bob and Kathy, but if you know of any, I was just wondering.
I was just thinking, what about the Zeko brothers?
Kathy and Bob would have to. I know once they, I think Kathy said it was a contractor's yard, but I don't know, it's I'd have to double check with Kathy and Bob.
Yeah, they don't, uh, that particular business doesn't, um. I mean, as the definition, it talks about selling co- commodities, you know, so it doesn't sell a physical product. You know, it's a, you you would, you would hire them to do, you know, ha- hazardous waste removal.
Well, I think she's talking about the Zeko with the next to um.
Oh, oh, the um, oh, oh.
LNS now.
I'm I'm sorry, um, I was, yeah, um, I was thinking of the old Zeko down the street. Um, they, I I think Bob at one, one point said that they would probably fall under, yeah, either a. Um, pre-existing non-conforming, either as a contractor's yard, um, I don't necessarily think he said that they were a greenhouse. Um, because I think greenhouse might contain some sort of structures. I gotta look up greenhouse definition, but.
I guess maybe we could ask Bob what they would be considered, like, there probably is some sort of special permit for them and. To see what the special permit says that they are. Would they be wholesale trade?
Yeah, I I I I've never, we've never. You know, in recent history, talked about, uh, talked about anyone, um. Being wholesale, you know, s- solely a wholesale trader.
Right.
So it wouldn't hurt anyone to take it out of business west? Or even business south?
Doesn't sound like it.
Bob will look through these too, right? Well, I think he already did, I mean, I think he's been here when we started talking about this.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so are we okay with this one as it is?
So so you're taking, you're you're gonna leave it as an allowed use in the highway business and the industrial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The wholesale trade.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving along.
Is there anyone in the audience? I can't see.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't do this one already, I'm sorry, um, any comments on this one? Okay, it doesn't look like it, okay, why don't we go to the next one? Okay, so this is for the two family dwelling, so the first one. The first item here is just to make it so that anyone who's coming for a special permit, it just comes with the same board, um. It's a lot of work to go to two different boards for a special permit, and in the case of two family dwelling. Um, you would need to go to the ZBA and the planning board, so in this case. It would just cut down on any confusion, not just from an applicant standpoint, but it could also bring um risk into the process because. You know, you could have two boards put conflicting conditions on the same special permit, uh, on the same application, so. Um, it just kind of makes it a little bit messy, so this cleans that up a little bit by streamlining. And then the other thing I think was a, something that um Fred or Kathy had noticed about just how the, when we had made a change in the past. The timing was wasn't lining up with the actual process, so um. Kathy or Fred, I can't remember which had suggested the change that we changed that to prior to the public hearing, it didn't make sense to say within twenty-one days. Following the public hearing, um, because we need to hear from uh groundwater. Any further comments on that from the board? Um, questions from the public? Okay.
Hey, oop, did I go too far?
Are you going the wrong way?
Oh, I must have gone the wrong way. Sorry. You know, my screen moved to where my pictures were of the people talking, blocked my scroll bar. And now I'm just erring down, okay, is this one we just talked about? No.
No, okay, so this is the um, the groundwater protection overlay district. So in this case, there are a couple of different changes that we made, and the first one is really about moving, we had some language that talked about criteria that was. Up in a weird spot, so we talked about, um, it didn't really make sense to include in. Okay, any any comments from the public? Okay, moving along.
Okay, so the last one is the non-conforming use. And um we had reached out, or I had reached out and I had brought out how. Per mass general law, changes in non-conforming use should trigger a special permit. And I asked um town council why it didn't interlook into it. And he came back with some changes. And um, these are the changes we made, they don't look very extensive, we worked with town council. And the one comment that will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood was something that we had. To add back in, it was been there before, now it's added back in, so. This was something as a board that we worked on with town council. I don't know if any other board members have, we had a whole separate meeting on it, so I don't know if anybody has any more input. As a board.
Um, did we get, we got a written comment from Ashley on this one, did we, did we?
Oh, maybe, yeah, I'll go look. I have it, I pulled it up, I added her comments to the first part of the bylaws, but then. I ran out of time.
Was that today that we got that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I didn't see that.
Um, I had for, it came, it came from me, I forwarded to the board.
I'm looking at it now, did it open on the screen or no? But even if it didn't, she mentioned that the less non-conforming was very confusing. Let me move this, less non-conforming doesn't make sense. I understand the intention, but I think some clearer language should be used, so this isn't up for debate. Perhaps for a similar use or one that conforms more closely to the. And and that does make sense to me, because similar or less non-conforming actually was something. That I would have questioned before, because when I look at other towns, it actually had less detrimental. that I would have questioned before, because when I look at other towns, it actually had less detrimental. So I'm not sure why town council thought less non-conforming made more sense and less detrimental. But Ashley's recommendation one that conforms more closely versus less non-conforming.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead.
I, I think, I'm sorry, Carrie, but.
No, go ahead, go ahead, it's fine.
I was just gonna say, you know, why, why don't I just, you know, easily double check with town council on this one since he's the one that suggested the, the language. And maybe, maybe it was a misstep, or, or maybe not. Because I know, you know, internally, when we talk about non-conforming uses and looking at you're gonna see one on the A and R, one of the A and Rs we have to review tonight. But, you know, we talk about whether someone is making something less non-conforming, or whether they're making it more non-conforming, meaning they're, meaning they're, you know, extending the non-conformity. And that, and that's something that you can't do, but you can make something less non-conforming. And that, that frequently happens. So, so I don't necessarily think that language, you know, is, is off. But you know, I mean, it's up to the board, but I can easily just check with town council. Given that he, you know, provided this language for you.
I guess I could see where an alteration or a structure could be less non-conforming. But for use. I, I don't know, is that subjective of which use is less non-conforming than the other use?
Wait, but actually, in the version I printed, and maybe I printed the wrong one, I have less non-conforming use with detrimental crossed out.
Yeah.
Get that.
Yeah, correct.
So it's not on this one? Okay.
Oh, it's not on mine?
Right here.
Oh, yeah, actually, Amy, under section, it should be O two O. You know, seven dash O eight dash O two O.
Yeah.
But detrimental isn't crossed out in the third line.
Oh, okay, I just kind of paste this from somewhere.
I, I understand what you're saying, what, and what Ashley was saying about the less non-conforming, I actually had to read it twice when I first read it. But once you think about it, to me, it, it was pretty clear what the intent was for the use and the, the structure.
Just for me, if you have a non-conforming use, which would be, I don't know. A gas station. And now you're gonna make it less non-conforming, how would you decide? Is a car wash less non-conforming or more non-conforming? It seems so subjective. I guess detrimental is too.
And I think that is subjective. In that case, they're pretty close.
That's what the, um, like, I think this, actually, I said before that non-conforming is confusing, it's actually not confusing. But what's confusing is everybody's determination of subjective is subjective to, oh. My tongue is tied. Everybody has a different opinion, like, it's so subjective. Of what is more detrimental, what is more non-conforming.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess you can ask town council again while you have them with the other questions. Um, I did see less detrimental in a couple towns, and that's the only reason why I was there probably before, but I don't know. I mean, he chose less non-conforming.
I mean, I, I think the if I remember correctly, you know, a lot of the discussion from the planning board was was about the non-conformancy, not, not something being detrimental.
Right.
So, so that, so there was some, you know, you know, added emphasis about changing it to non-conforming. But, but again, you know, let me just double check with them and.
Okay. Well, when I, when I pulled up, I don't know, oh, we should ask if anybody else has questions, but I noticed, I did pull up Ashley's email and noticed she had some changes for contractor yard, so I just want to go back there for a second after we discuss this.
I mean, under the topic of non-conforming use, so I think that that, that verbiage is pretty clear.
Yeah, I, I agree, Millie, but I, you know, I can, I, I do, I agree with you, so I mean, but we can still, you know, I'll double check and.
Yeah. Okay, so for that, we're just gonna double check that spot, but otherwise, any other questions on this one? Okay, any public comments on this one? Okay. Um, Amy, you said there was one other item?
Yeah, I hate to skip if someone sends in a letter. I, I don't want to skip what they said, so I'll pull up contractor yard here, and then I'll pull up her. I don't think you can see it if I have that screen shared, but I'll pull up the email she sent and read it. She sent to the board, um. I think that was the only thing on her email. Under contractor yard, she thought yard should be capital.
I agree.
With a comma after yard, she did yards, comma, including administrative offices, she added an S in structures, comma. Used by a builder, and then she changed. Do you want me to just bring up her changes? I think that might be easier.
Yeah, that's fine, because I have my own copy here.
Oh, okay, if everybody has their own copy, then I'll leave the original. But if everybody has their own copy, she just added some commas. And after similar business, she put comma that are dedicated to the storage of and she crossed out there and put the vehicles. She had a comma after materials. And then after fabrication, she wrote used in the regular course of their business.
Carrie, you said you had sent this out, I, I, I just wasn't in my office.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
No, 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 I mean, I'm just saying, I, I didn't print it, so.
You know what, I'll, I'll pull it out if you want.
Well, no, if, I mean, if Carrie, well, for my purposes, for, you know, tomorrow.
I did, I sent it to the planning board.
Okay, all right, so, okay, so I'll just go from there. I mean, if you're all in agreement with.
Does everybody have a copy, or do you want me to pull it out?
I did not get it, I mean, I probably got it, but I didn't check my emails.
All right, I'll pull it out. Because it shows ours and hers. I just have so many things that say. I think this is hers. Does everybody see that one with the blue?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, so this is what was sent out this afternoon. So these are her changes in blue, she made yards, like I said, capital, added in a comma, added an S. There's a couple of the commas. So if everybody just wants to read through it and see if they agree with the changes.
Why would they want to change their vehicles to the vehicles?
Um, it just got emailed to us, so I don't know.
Yeah.
But, but I think maybe there should stay, that was one that I would probably question. But I'm okay with the commas, I am not the best at grammar and my commas. Nothing, you know? And she talked about the salvage yards, but we already changed that.
Right.
Could, could the, the intent that their vehicles be because maybe the owner of the property leases out space for somebody else to park their vehicles?
I don't know, but I think.
I don't even understand what used in the regular course of their business, why that would be added in. Maybe she can give some more clarification for the next meeting.
I think the changes are good except for there. I think for fabrications. Yeah, she could, I could ask her.
Is, is she on the meeting tonight?
Okay, so we can just reply and ask if she could just clarify what, I mean, outside of grammatical, what was the thought behind there versus the and adding used in the regular course of their business? Wait, was materials added, or is that just a?
Materials was added.
Oh, okay.
And then Kathy, maybe at the same time, if there's any contractors' changes that we asked Bob about, maybe he could, he could weigh in on her changes. So when she comes back for the reasons why she suggested, he could come back with his suggestions as well.
Yeah, I don't know, it sounds like it's, I, I can't speak for her, I think it'd be great to hear from her, but just so that it's not storage of other people's stuff. So just used in the course of their business, not just a storage yard for everything and anything, maybe that was the thought behind it.
That makes sense, really, because then it starts to, where do you draw the line between contractors' yard and then we turn into our junk salvage yards. Well, salvage is okay now, it would be junk.
Yeah.
All right, so that was Ashley's comment, why don't we clarify with her, just to give her a chance to let us know what her thought was, so that we, I mean, obviously, that's just speculation, so we're not sure. And then I want to make sure we have enough time for those A and Rs. So I think that finishes up everything that we have for tonight, and then why don't we continue the hearing to April twentieth at six PM, we'll do the same thing. So why don't, if anyone wants to make a motion to continue the public hearing to consider proposed zoning amendments for 2021's annual town meeting for April twentieth at six PM?
So.
For a second?
Second.
Are all in favor? Millie?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
And Carrie's an eye.
I had a quick question for, now, if people, if there aren't any new people with any new questions, do we have to go through each one again? Kathy is part of the public hearing? Or if there are no new comments, do we just?
No, you don't have, you don't have to do what you did tonight, you can, what would be appropriate is, you know, go back to the ones that you had questions on. And then, of course, if someone, you know, new is at the hearing and they've got a question on, you know, article, I don't, you know, I don't know, the first one, you know, about.
Yeah.
You know, then, then you need to speak to it, but.
So we can just do a, anybody new here, have a comment on any of the articles?
Any, um, for the purpose of what you had emailed about assigning people to bylaws, is that something that do we, must we decide tonight, or can we get to the A and Rs? I just want to make sure we.
Yeah, no, you, I mean, it, it, it's just that the selectmen are gonna, you know, put together their list, I guess, for Monday. But, you know, I mean, that's, if, you know, if you're not ready, you're not ready, so, you know, it'll just get added, you know, let them know that you're gonna do it at the twentieth.
Okay, that's great. Can we quickly move on to the A, I just want to make sure we get to the A and Rs?
Sure. Did you, do you have those, Carrie?
Oh, sure, yeah.
I, I, well, I don't know if you already had them ready, or?
I thought I did, yep, I'm sure I do.
If not, I can pull up my, um, the email that they're in.
I'm doing Alcott Drive, eighteen.
Sure, we can do that one first.
Sure.
So, but both of the, what I'm, what I'm gonna say tonight and what, you know, town council said in, in both of his emails to the board about both of these A and Rs is they're, they're in almost identical situations where the the proposal here is the, the under, the underlying zone is being met. You know, by this division of land, but the overlay district is not being met. And originally, on the Lawrence Street A and R, I, that's the one that first came to the board, that was filed first. I had indicated to the board that we needed to have, you know, the applicant fix it, because the overlay district wasn't being met. But in town council's review of them, because collectively, myself, Bob Frederico and Fred Litchfield, we, we all review the A and Rs, and we often do it together. And so there, there was some question about some case law about the fact that, that an A and R just needs to meet a minimum frontage and a minimum square footage. And a creation of lots on the A and R does not mean that they conform to the zoning bylaw, and it does not mean that they are buildable lots. So, on both of these A and Rs, in particular. Can people see my cursor?
Oh, yours is, I don't think it is though, Kathy.
Okay, you can bring yours down to, right, to the left. No determination of compliance with zoning requirements may or intended by this endorsement. If you, if you want to go to that one, Carrie.
Yeah, sure.
Please.
Okay. Let's see, I think, oh no, that's still Alcott.
And the, and both of these A and Rs are in an overlay, are in the groundwater overlay district, so that's where the, kind of the rub comes. That you would think, you would assume that they have to meet the, the overlay district, and, and they don't. I mean, eventually, you know, if they, if they, you know, applied for a building permit, you know, they would be denied, because they're either gonna have to seek zoning relief or, you know, again, the, the note stands on the plan that these are not, you know, that the planning board is not endorsing that these conform with the zoning. And on this one, right under Lawrence Street, is where, you know, this particular, it's usually right around the signature block, so again, the language is slightly different, but it's, it means the same, there's, there's three sort of phrases they can choose, that the surveyor can choose to put on the plan. So in this particular one, it says, you know, planning board endorsement is not a a determination to conformance with the zoning bylaws. So again, we have the, this is over on Lawrence Street, this is number forty Lawrence Street, if people are familiar with it. There's, it's an existing one lot, and what they're proposing on this A and R is that they're creating two lots. But in fact, again, the endorsement doesn't mean that those two lots meet zoning.
Okay, any questions?
Where does, it says something to be removed, right above the garage, are they removing the garage?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
That, that's their intent.
Okay.
So the, the board would just, as, as your practice, you know, has been this past year, is just to, you know, if you take a vote on this, and then Carrie, we can just arrange tomorrow. At least this Lawrence Street one needs to be signed tomorrow, and if you are able to come, I mean, whether it's you, Carrie, or anyone else, we do have to sign this Lawrence Street one, because there's a twenty-one day period. And they gave us an extension on this, on this particular one.
Okay, okay, no, any other board comments on this one?
No.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the law forty Lawrence Street A and R?
So moved.
Uh, second.
Second.
All in favor? Millie?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Carrie's an eye. Um, then this one needs to be signed tomorrow. Kathy, what's a good time to come down?
We've got design review at eight o'clock. Um, so that it usually goes about an hour and a half. So any, anytime after that.
Okay.
Would work, Carrie.
Okay, great. And then for the eighteen to twenty two Alcott Drive, is there a motion to approve the A and R?
And make a motion to approve the A and R for eighteen Alcott Drive?
Second. Okay, all in favor? Millie?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
And Carrie's an eye. Okay, and that one is not necessarily due, but we may as well get.
That, that's over actually the next, by the end of this week, it would need to be signed, so.
Okay, so we may as well take care of it. Okay, just really quickly, I know we don't have a lot of time left. I want to make sure we at least get a couple of things. I don't think we have time for the minutes tonight unless are there any super far behind that we? Can we hold till April twentieth on the minutes? Is that okay with the board?
Yeah.
February, March, April. That's, I think that should be okay still. Um, let's see, I lost my agenda. Okay, so we're not gonna do the minutes. Um, one thing I asked the board, I wanted to talk about the Z B A had met on, now I figure what day it was. It was their last meeting in March. And one of the discussion pieces was about the zoning amendments going to town meeting. I don't know if anybody had a chance to take a look at the, the comments that were made. And I just wanted to talk to the board about you know, any, any sort of thoughts on that. I had some concerns. I don't, did everybody get to watch it or no?
I did.
I did.
Anthony, did you get to watch it?
No.
So Carrie, can I just ask for clarification? So at town meeting, the town moderator will often say to the municipal bylaw code enforcement group as well as the zoning, the Z B A. On each article, do you approve and do you have, you know, what's your feedback? They, they ask that at every meeting. Are you, are you talking about that or you're talking about?
I disagree. They don't ask the Z B A. I've been in, in the very first town meeting where we sat in the front and we were gonna present for the first time. There was an article and I said to Kathy, do I say the planning board and the zoning board unanimously approve this? And she said, no, it is not under the purview of the Z B A. It's only the planning board. They don't, they don't do it. And if you read.
Are you saying that at all the recent town meetings that the town moderator hasn't asked Z B A in the municipal code bylaw for their feedback?
No.
Nope.
It's not in their purview at all.
What are you saying that he's never done that?
Only for the municipal code, there, there was a different bylaw group that used to meet. And he asked them about the plastic bags. I remember he did ask about, but he never asked the Z B A.
I don't know, Kathy, do we have an example of any time that the, that's been asked? I guess, Michelle, did you get to watch the video or no?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I guess I was a little confused since we had a meeting with the Z B A and we discussed all the zoning with the Z B A and we asked for their feedback.
Right, right.
Why would we just now say, you can't give input at town meeting? I thought that.
No, 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 so.
We'd at least want to, you know, you know, cooperate with other boards. I, I guess I don't understand what the concern is.
Okay, so it'd be if you, so watching the video may help to clarify because I think the conversation was about, you know, the role of the planning board versus the role of the Z B A. And the role of the planning board is to create bylaws and the role of the Z B A is to enforce bylaws. And at town meeting, what we do as we're authorized to do by Mass General Law is to hold the conversations, hold the public hearing and come to town meeting with our recommendations based on the elected board authorized to do so. I, I think any member of the Z B A as an individual can comment at town meeting as they've always done and have the right to do. But as the enforcement board, the, the board in charge of enforcement, it doesn't seem like it's sending a mixed signal to people who expect to have a fair hearing if they were to appeal a bylaw. And if they've already, the Z B A has already been on the town meeting floor saying they don't even agree with that bylaw and then would expect a fair hearing. I think what was interesting about that meeting is that, that one of the Z B A members had expressed a, he was against that very much for those same reasons, that it was really their job was in enforcement. I think we've been very open with having the Z B A's feedback. I think we had a joint meeting. I think we had read their memo. I, I feel like we've had a really open communication. And so it surprised me a little bit that that would be an additional component because it didn't seem in the purview of an appointed of, of the Z B A in the enforcement. It would be like if the police made up the laws and then enforced the same laws they made up. One board authorizes, one board creates. And I don't know how that, the perception of people, it concerns me. And I just wanted the board to be able to talk about it and if you've got, if you had a chance to watch the video, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I actually did get a chance to watch it and I, I felt the same way a little bit about having some confusion over. You know, there was some discussion about having a member of the board actually be someone to give guidance and information on the, the bylaws that we're trying to pass. And I just don't know that that's the, their, that, that role. If questions were to be asked by the public, I don't think that would be a role that they would be undertaking to answer those questions based on the laws that, that the planning board has put forth. And I think there was some confusion about how that would be handled if they were gonna go forth and make comments and then a question arose based on those comments that we didn't either, you know, make or that they were trying to interpret. So there was some question on that, too.
Yeah, I just think it's a bad precedent overall. It concerns me. I think it concerned at least one of the Z B A members. And I don't think it's a precedent that we want to set because the place, the people, voters elect this board to make the zoning bylaws. Everyone has a chance to comment them as individuals, no matter what. There's nobody that's excluded from the process. We're in charge of holding the public hearings. We get the input from the public. So what we're bringing to town meeting is not just our own, you know, we've now solicited public feedback and heard that feedback. And based on what the public has come back to us with, we're now recommending a town meeting. We're making all these changes and making, making recommendations to the full legislative body, which is annual town meeting. That's our role and what we do. It doesn't seem like the enforcement board should be a part of that because it creates those blurred lines that I, I, I get concerned with that as a precedent and I don't know, any other thoughts on that?
I just thought that when we had a meeting with the Z B A because as you indicated, there was tension between the planning board and the Z B A and you went and had the meeting with them, I think it was left off that they said, okay, why don't you go create the bylaws and we'll provide feedback later?
Yeah, they did. We got a memo. We, we got a memo. So we had a joint meeting. We got a memo. I feel like we've been very open to accommodating feedback.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm not really, I, let's have the discussion at the next meeting. I don't even underst, I'll, I'll watch it, but I don't understand what your concern is, so.
Michelle, imagine having us going up on the town meeting and say, well, I don't really agree, you know, what's the planning board? Now we'll vote on the B O S like more in articles. It's two different boards and do you think we should have, like, say, someone on the Z B A doesn't agree with one? You think the two boards should have infighting at town meeting on who's in charge of answering the questions? It's, it's just crazy. And if you look at seven oh three oh three oh.
Amy?
Huh?
We can talk about it the next meeting when Anthony and I.
Michelle, take a look at seven oh three oh three oh and it states what the Board of Appeals does in their purview. There doesn't even have to be a discussion. The Board of Appeals is to hear and decide appeals taken by any person aggrieved by a reason of his inability, inability on decisions and it's enforcement. Like, if you read the zoning bylaws and you read Mass General Law, that's very straightforward. This shouldn't even be an argument right now.
Can I just clarify a couple of things, Carrie? And then obviously I think you need to continue the conversation, but
Sure.
I just want to clarify that, that the zoning Board of Appeals doesn't enforce anything. That there, there's no board that enforces anything in town. So they, so just, you know, wh- whether regardless of how you feel about the subject matter, they don't, that board doesn't enforce anything, just like you don't enforce anything. You know, the zoning bylaws are enforced by the zoning officer, you know, which in our particular town is the building inspector. So that's, I, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, that's a good clarification. Um, maybe I'm not articulating it properly. I guess, you know, when, when somebody has a grievance, if Bob were to make a determination and somebody has, has a zoning enforcement officer and they have a grievance with that, they go to the zoning Board of Appeals. And now the board that they're going before has just announced on town meeting floor, they don't even agree with that bylaw. And now, you know, is there a perception that they're going into a hearing where, you know, they don't have due process because they've already heard that the board is gonna vote on that? Has already stated they don't even think it's, you know, they don't even agree with it. So in that capacity, I just get, I just get concerned and I, I understand what you're saying about they're not in charge of enforcement. Maybe next time we can, if you get a chance to watch it, Michelle or Anthony, and we can just come back around. I just want to be fair to the public and the voters, you know, who do elect people to come up with bylaws, who, who participate in our public hearings. I think, I think we made an effort to be open and, and meet with the Z B A and I, if they don't, if they didn't feel that way, I'd be interested to hear that because that would be more concerning to me. If there are better ways we can do it, that's great, too. But I'm not sure town meeting is the spot. And especially, you know, to Amy's point about if we, if we don't, even if we agree, that's great, but it's still, I don't like the precedent. But if we don't agree, that's even worse because then well, why did we bother to try to work together if we come to the end of the game and, and we're, you know, having dragging the voters through a fight. But anyway, if everyone has a minute to watch that, I know we're running late. I don't want to go too, too long. Really good news? Kathy, do you want to mention our really good news?
Oh, sure. We, we. As far as the town. Planning board, we received ten thousand dollars of Central Mass's, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission's time to assist us with the recommendations that were. You know, a pot of money that people apply for, towns apply for, and then the projects are, you know, but discussed, reviewed, and then, you know, mo- most are chosen, some aren't. And then some people also have their, their project may get chosen, but the funding may get reduced. So we were fully funded and we'll be working with Su Jaffa, who did your presentation on the traffic and we're, we'll be putting together the neighborhood walk audit. We'll be doing that later this spring. This all has to be done by December. You know, by the end of December, you know, twenty twenty one. So part of it will be the, the post occupancy monitoring report that Central Mass will, will do. Amazon has funded that. But so Central Mass will do that. Then we'll take the information from that. We'll take information from traffic counts that they're going to do in the Bartlett Street area. Information from the Police and Fire Department about accidents and incidents, incidences. And then we'll do the walk audit, the neighborhood walk audit, which is a, a, a one day. Actually, you know, it's about an hour, actually, but I mean, we'll do a before and after with, with stakeholders, as we call them. And then it'll get put together in a report about, you know, short term, long, medium and long term recommendations that the town could then take a look at to enact to improve, you know, traffic, traffic issues in that area.
That's exciting. It's really exciting. Okay, and then also, oh, any questions on that?
No, it's exciting.
Okay. Um, just for Z B A applications, they have, what, do they have ninety West Main coming up?
Yes, but we haven't scheduled that for a hearing yet. That'll.
Oh, okay.
I believe that will be in May. So Carrie, you, you actually asked if we could, if I could get them to come into April twentieth?
I just didn't, I thought they're the end of April meeting, but they're not.
Yeah, so let, so let's have them come in in the beginning of May.
Yep, that's no problem.
So the, so the, there's the, so the Z B A has a hearing coming up on April fourteenth. It's an odd month because the Z B A typically doesn't meet in April because town meeting falls. You know, if we were doing town meeting in the evening, you know, at the high school. So town meeting falls when, when the Z B A meets, so they usually do not meet in April. However, we're having two, two meetings now in April, one on April fourteenth, which is just for three ninety nine Hudson Street. And then one on, oh, no, wait, isn't maybe it is scheduled for April, Carrie, for the end of April, ninety West Main Street. Yeah, so that, so that is why you did, yeah, that, that makes sense now when we talked about having them in, I'm sorry, on, on April, your April twentieth meeting. So the Z B A did, is meeting with them on the twenty seventh. And that's the only thing on the agenda that night. So that, so ninety West Main Street is through with design review. And Fred, are they before groundwater? Or did they already go to groundwater? Or, or do they have to go to groundwater?
I believe they're gonna, I'm gonna put them on the agenda for the groundwater meeting on the thirteenth. So both of those hearings, both of those discussions will happen on the thirteenth. And Z B A will handle one on the fourteenth and one on the twenty seventh, and the planning board can handle them both on the twentieth.
Okay. Um, Carrie, I don't know if you want to consider starting earlier that night?
Sure, but can we start at five thirty?
You could if that, if, I mean, if the board.
Do you mean for the technical review of ninety West?
Yeah. You know, do, do them first.
And just, yeah.
At five thirty. If you happen to finish with them early, you know, maybe you can do some minutes and then, you know, start your public hearings at six.
Yeah, that probably makes sense. If everyone can, can we accommodate that?
Carrie, can I make a, a suggestion?
Sure.
Is five o'clock too early for the board to meet?
That's fine with me. I, I thought you had the restriction on just getting.
I do, but my next comment was I was going to make a recommendation to the board to meet from five to five thirty to go into executive session with the design review committee to discuss the letters that were sent to them this week.
Yeah, so what I want to do for the.
Discuss from five to five thirty and then move to the next applicant.
Yep, so what I want to do for that, we obviously received letters in support and against. We had, we received, just so that, this isn't on our agenda, so I don't want to deliberate it. But we had some letters that were sent in about committee appointments to design review and we had some letters in support and some letters in against. And what I want to make sure we do before we get into any discussion is to make sure we have a plan in place that the board can talk about in advance together and then decide from there if we want to go into executive session from that meeting after we've had a chance to look and, and do a full review, what are a plan for our next steps. It makes sense.
You mean by a plan, like who?
We meet, if we put on our agenda so we can deliberate what we'd want to do for a plan. And then as part of that, we decide, okay, at the next meeting we'll go, if that's even able to go in an executive session over that topic. I'm not sure that's one of our areas that we're able to go.
So could we ask town council while we have a series of questions to town council? Could we go into executive session along with the design review committee to discuss it?
Right, so we need to find out from town council. Right, so we need to find out from town council under what conditions we can go into executive session. Because there are only specific reasons we can go into executive session. But we just need to make sure this is one of them.
Yeah. So if we could do that for the next meeting, Kathy, to ask if we can go into executive session? And can also the design review committee join that executive session as well?
Well, I think that's a plan that the board should talk about first as a next step to our, if we put this on the agenda in April, the next meeting, to talk about what our plan is as a board first before we just ask if we're going to open up an executive session with a committee?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that you received three letters from three design review committee members to address. So the design review committee has asked you and as chair has asked me to reach out for you for assistance. So.
Yep.
You know, that's why you can ask legal counsel that. And I'd like it addressed if not at this meeting, the next meeting.
Yeah, I think it's really important to address. I think that we need to be mindful of our actions and our, and the steps that we take. And to be sure that we don't, we use executive session properly. And we also get to talk as a board first. We, we obviously don't have this on the agenda. So I think next time we meet, we could put on the agenda, talk about as a board, our next steps. And then if we can find out about executive session and then we'll know if that's an option or not. I think that would be helpful to know at that point.
Yeah, I think that's good to get counsel, legal counsel's input.
Okay, so you, so you want, you, you want to add that subject matter to an open meeting on April twentieth? And then in the meantime, ask town council if you can hold an executive session?
Yes. So, so on the next agenda, we'll put the topic. And so that we can discuss it freely as a board for a plan for next steps. And then in the meantime, we just need to know from town council, what is the, what are the reasons for executive? Does this qualify as something for executive session?
Okay, but, but even though you, you're going to talk about it in an open session first?
Well, we're not meeting with a, we're just talking about our plans for next step of what we're going to do. We don't really have, I mean, we shouldn't even continue, we shouldn't even be deliberating now, really.
Okay, well, all right, so you, you can help me write whatever that agenda item should be, Carrie. So do you want that on your four twenty agenda? For five o'clock?
I think we should start at five because we have so many.
Yeah, let's start at five if we, can everybody accommodate starting at five o'clock next time?
On the twentieth?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Jim, is that, is that something that you can do, Jim?
Yeah, not a problem. No conflicts on my end. I, I don't believe I'm scheduled for anything else on Tuesday. But from my own personal schedule, I'm available at five o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so five o'clock will, will, that will be on the agenda. Five thirty. Ninety West Main Street. And then we'll go from there with the hearings. Okay.
Okay. So other than that, any other items?
Uh, just a quick question if I may, and if it's not something we can talk about, you guys can let me know. But directed probably towards spread, there seems to be a pretty significant land clearing on Main Street. And I don't know if that, I'm, I'm guessing that might be working through some boards. I'm not certain which address it is and I don't know if that's anything you can comment on or not.
Uh, that project's permitted through the conservation commission.
Did it, did it actually, I watched the last conservation commission meeting, didn't get continued?
Uh, nope. Mia tells me that they have an order of conditions.
Oh, all right, maybe I watched the one before. I thought they were talking about slope of the driveway and stuff.
Anthony, you kind of froze out. Where was this for?
Uh, West Main Street.
The one next to Duke's Automotive?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I get it.
Okay, so if they're, so they're clearing land, if, is it, do they need a land clearing permit or no?
No.
No.
Oh, it's under twenty thousand square feet?
I don't know.
No, they don't need a land clearing permit because they have an order of conditions from conservation. There are some exemptions in that requirement for a land clearing permit. If they have an order of conditions from conservation or they have an earthwork permit, they do not need a land clearing permit from the planning board.
So the twenty thousand square feet doesn't matter if they have an order of conditions?
Correct.
Okay. All right, then I guess that is a wrap. And we have a packed meeting for next time. So I don't think we have any other updates at this point. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
You.